Yeah, 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 sorry. All right, good evening. We have a two-part meeting today. The first part is for the reorganization. So we're going to start on that process. I'm going to call the reorganization meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Dr. Campley?
Here.
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Mr. Saylor?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so while the school year begins on the first day of July each year, the Pennsylvania School Code provides that the school directors shall also meet and organize annually during the first week of December. The code requires that a majority of the board be present to effectuate such organization. This meeting will be conducted as prescribed by the code to allow us to seat and recognize our board. So the first part is we're going to have public comment, but the public comment is regulated just for board reorganization. All right, so the comments that you talked about are just for the purpose of the board reorganization. And so with that, I will open up public comment. Does anyone have a public comment in terms of the board reorganization? And seeing none, I will continue. So we will move on with the election of our temporary president. Any member of the board can nominate a temporary president. The action does not require a motion and a second. A temporary president must be elected from the holdover members of the board, which are Dr. Campley, Mr. Fountain, Mr. Keenan, and myself. The current president then declares the nomination for the nominations closed. Or I will now accept any nominations for a temporary president. Nomination, Mr. Fountain.
Nominate Mr. Saylor.
Mr. Saylor has been nominated to serve as temporary president for this reorganization meeting. Are there any other nominations of the temporary president? Seeing none, nominations are closed. And I will now declare the board as myself as a temporary president, and we will now ask our newly elected board members, Mr. Robert Liggett, Mr. Todd McKinney, Mrs. Trina Saylor, Dr. Wade Weston, and Ms. Laura White to come on up as we administer their oath of office. Where would you like to...
Right there. We're going to do that right there.
Great. Thank you very much. I ask the newly sworn-in board members to take a seat at the dais up front.
Mr. President, while they're doing that, I would just note for the record that the Dr. Russell's district superintendent did receive confirmation of the certification of election for these new board members from the county board of elections earlier today.
Yes, thank you very much. Congratulations to our newly elected board members. And just as a note, when you go to talk, push that little green button on your microphone so that everyone can hear. I am going to accept nominations for a board president to serve for the term of one year. Do I see any nominations? I have a nomination, Mr. Liggett.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mrs. White.
Laura White has been nominated to serve as board president for one year. Are there any other nominations for the position of board president? Seeing no other nominations, nominations for board president are closed. The name of Laura White has been properly nominated for the election as our board president. Congratulations, Ms. White.
Could I just ask that, as a matter of formality, that the board vote on Ms. White's appointment as the sole nominee?
Sure. Nominations are closed for the nomination of Laura White, who has been properly nominated for the board president, the Perkerman Valley School Board of Directors. I will ask for a voice vote. All in favor of the nomination signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Let the record show unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. At this time then, I will take nominations for a newly elected vice president. And take nominations for a newly elected board vice president to serve for the term of one year. Dr. Weston?
I will nominate Mr. McKinney.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations for a board vice president are closed. Mr. McKinney has been properly nominated, and I guess we'll do the same.
Please.
If the board would verify the nomination, the sole nomination of Mr. McKinney by a vote of aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? And Mr. McKinney has been nominated as a board vice president for the term of one year. Congratulations, Mr. McKinney.
And just again, for clarification and a record, he's been officially appointed as vice president for the term of one year.
Thank you, Mr. Subers. Item 1.1, his motion for the authorization of board officers to sign checks and continue to use the present signature plate until a new one can be made. Is there a motion?
I shall move.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Ayes have it. 1.11, our remarks by the newly elected officers. Mr. McKinney, do you have anything to share?
The only thing that I would like to state is that I am humbled and honored to be chosen to serve in this capacity. I look forward to a productive and cooperative tenure in this position. I hope to work with all members of this board and this community or whatever to bring us back to a place of civility and kindness and care for all of our students. So I look forward again to again getting us back to a place where we actually have conversation with one another and dialogue as opposed to shouting and yelling at one another. We are better than this, and we should expect better for not only ourselves but for our students and our children. And I would like to just thank everyone for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. I have something as well. And although I know all of you are not here specifically for the board reorganization, hopefully you'll find the comments that I have prepared timely, and you will see that they have some excellent merit. Sorry, give me one second. Normally I have time to set up here. Okay, so I have given a great deal of thought as to what this board will look like from this day on, and the last several years have presented challenges that none of us could have anticipated. I'll start by saying that I'm very proud of how we've collectively dedicated our time to this school district, and I know firsthand that the impact of serving on the school board extends past each of us, to those who support us in our day-to-day lives, specifically our friends and families. Many times, discussions that we have here trickle down and are felt in their lives within the community, and most importantly, for those of us that have children in our schools. This new norm that we've all been living is unsustainable, and the example and tone that we set here should model what is considered acceptable behavior for our community at large. Although we are human and may sometimes falter in our actions and our words, in no way does that mean that we should not stop trying to hold our best selves accountable and be our best selves. As we move ahead, I ask that we work to do here, the work that we do here, focus on making our school district stronger for our staff, faculty, and most importantly, our students. This is ultimately, this will ultimately lead to healing within our community. And focusing on the very best each of us has to offer while acknowledging and celebrating what makes us different will create an opportunity to learn about what makes us the same. We are at a pivotal moment, and change must happen. We must do better and come to common ground. We must reset. Several weeks ago, one of our high school students wrote an op-ed piece regarding the dynamic and temperature of our board meetings. The student highlighted the need for compromise and listening to diverse opinions, emphasizing the danger of drowning out different views. As an adult and parent, I was humbled by this piece in our high school newspaper. Our students are not only tasked with all of the things that come with growing and learning, but they have also been burdened with the discourse in our community. They have repeatedly observed adults behaving in ways that would never be acceptable in their day-to-day interactions. Beginning today, I ask that each of us be accountable to a new standard of behavior and lead by example. With all respect intended, if a behavior or comment would not be acceptable in one of our buildings during school hours, that behavior will not be tolerated or acceptable during a board meeting. We must shift our mindset to one of productivity and respect. To be clear, these expectations extend beyond this table and out to the community at large. Regardless of what position you take, every one of us is entitled to have a bad day, and sometimes passion and conviction can get the better of us. The most important lesson here is one of grace, humility, and understanding for our individual humanity. Lastly, I want to acknowledge that community engagement within our district is the highest it's ever been, with an incredible 26% increase in voter turnout over the election two years ago. It is our collective wish that this engagement continues, and our district benefits from the wisdom and experience of all of our community. In the coming days, I will be discussing with Dr. Russell ways to foster more community building within our district, and additionally, I plan to support and encourage not only strengthening but also broadening opportunities for student voice and engagement. I'm excited to continue to support our district, and I'm hopeful for the growth and success that is to come. I thank you all for the opportunity to do so. And with that, we will have a brief adjournment and a group picture and a setup of emails, and I roll this.
Can you do a roll call vote please?
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Mr. Leggett.
Here.
Mr. McKinney.
Here.
Mrs. Sadler.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Dr. Weston.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
And now we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Item 1.04 is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Okay, that the agenda is approved. I'm sorry, all in favor? Sorry, thank you for the grace. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay. And the agenda is approved. 1.05 is comments on any topic. Before I go through the procedures for public comment, I think that Dr. Russell has a couple of words to say and then I'll go through the procedures.
Thank you Ms. White, and I appreciate the opportunity to share a statement. Before I present my superintendent's report this evening, I wanted to touch base on the district safety protocols. As many of you are aware, there was a physical altercation on Friday afternoon in our high school. In response to that altercation, there have been questions about discipline and safety protocols. While I recognize there's a lot of concern on the part of our community, I want to be very careful that I do not jeopardize the investigation or violate anyone's confidentiality. Questions about the actual types of infractions that individuals posed can be addressed by referring to the high school student handbook. Consequences for respective infractions are also represented there, so for example, when a detention might be assigned versus in-school suspension, or out-of-school suspension, or expulsion, as well as when charges may be filed with the police. And there are times when consequences are assigned and they are not final right away based on affording due process. Additional questions focused on our security guards. For example, are our male security guards permitted to intervene with female students who may be involved in an altercation? The answer is yes. They can intervene, and that is the expectation. Another question posed was whether students would be disciplined if they attempted to intervene or break up an altercation. This is a tricky step for students to take, and I think we need to provide more education in this area. However, if students are attempting to intervene for the purpose of helping, they will not be disciplined. Lastly, there was a question about our staff stepping in and whether they are permitted to do that. Our staff can certainly step in to protect the students in their care, however, when a physical altercation is occurring, it is not the expectation. This is something we would expect our security guards and/or school police officers to address. When I say staff, I'm referring to teachers and paraprofessionals. I hope this clarifies some of the questions that have been posed over the weekend. Thank you for the opportunity.
Dr. Russell, thank you for that clarification. So with public comment, anyone in the public who is a resident of the school district has the ability to comment for up to three minutes. Before they begin their comments, please remember to state your name and your municipality. And we will start with those that signed in first. We have a lot of not sure's, so we're going to start with yassas and then I'll go back, okay? So the first commenter would be Shona McGee.
Shona McGee, Skibek Township. I initially came here tonight to thank the retiring board members for their unwavering dedication to our district and our students, and to congratulate the new members and welcome them. But the circumstances of the week are leading me in a different way. I have a lot of questions, suggestions, I guess, about this protocol and policy for safety for our students. One of them being, I know that you mentioned there's a due process. I spent the entire day reading policies and the student handbook, and there's a lot of unclear language regarding the protocol for a scenario like this. I know that the due process, they have to, the most you can do at first is the 10-day suspension. What happened on Friday was heinous. It's just an absolute sin that it has gotten to this in our schools. What can we do moving forward to prevent situations like this? And with the due process, with the 10-day suspension, my main question is, there has to be a hearing or something along the lines for due process. Does that have to be within that 10 days? Are those students that did this allowed back into school after these 10 days, or do they have the hearing first? Or a suggestion for that to be written into policy, and a lot of the bullying policies to be looked over, combed through, in a more clear, concise language so that everyone understands it, including staff and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Jessica Bono.
Good evening. This is my first time speaking at a board meeting.
Thank you for stepping up. If you could just restate your name and your municipality.
I'm sorry, Jessica Buno, and I live in Trapboro. Unfortunately, I'm at my first board meeting, not under the best circumstances. My daughter was one of the girls that was supposed to be attacked by the two girls on Friday. Unfortunately, her friend was alone in that situation and got the brunt of it. I need to know what you guys are going to do to help with security, so I can feel like my child and her friends are safe coming to school. Dr. Russell, I've had way too many conversations with you that you promised to follow up on, that you haven't followed up on. I feel like too many things are brought to the attention of this board. Too many of you guys don't follow policy. You guys make a mockery of these meetings time and time after again, and these students see that. You guys are supposed to be an example for them. My daughter didn't feel safe coming to school today. What are you guys going to do about that? Are these girls going to be expelled? One of these girls was already expelled, moved away to another state, came back, and for some reason was allowed back into our district, which is a very dangerous move on your part. The brothers of these kids, one of them already fought my son, attacked him, after a principal at the high school was supposed to have a security guard waiting at the bus stop, or at the bus when they arrived at school, for the other student and for my son. My son was the only one who had one, and when he got there, the other students didn't, and he attacked my son. Now, the other brother attacked security guards and officials in our school not that long ago, and he was expelled. Now, we have the third girl who was expelled came back, and now the fourth student sibling of that family is now becoming violent as well. When is enough enough? That kid could have punctured Gianna's ribs, or punctured her lungs by breaking her ribs, and this could have been a whole nother conversation today. It is reckless sometimes, the decisions that you guys make. I feel like the board loses sight of our kids in this district, and you guys really need to step it up, because it's really sad that our own students are getting sick of it. Our own students feel the need that they need to defend themselves against the adults in this district. And it's really time for a big change. And I really hope that you guys take everything that the parents say today in consideration, and step up, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Adam Neely.
Good evening, Board and everyone here. My name is Adam Neely, Schwenksville Township. I'm a troubled youth mentor for over 20 years, as well as a bodybuilding and youth coach for 25 years. I came from Trenton, New Jersey, in the ghetto, and I came here to raise my children. There's a reason I came here to raise my children, as I'm sure all of you did the same. And I appreciate everything you just said very much so. We need to have very clear and definitive outlines of what will be and what will not be acceptable moving forward, from security, from law enforcement, and especially from the board. This is vital, and we need that. And as the parents who are bringing our children here, that is what we deserve. So moving forward, when incidents like this happen, a student is allowed back into a school after a situation that has happened. I can give you 100 kids that have been in this situation, came back, did further damage, far more severe damage, because they want to prove themselves now. There's already being threats posed to additional children. That's pretty severe, wouldn't you say? Would you say? Would you say? I'm asking you a question, looking at you, because I would assume that is very severe. And I hope that you take this situation to be as crucial as it truly is, because these are our children. And I, as one, will make sure that the people that I associate with, the children that I coach, the children that I build to be young men and young women in this community will be strong-upholding citizens for the law and for what is right. And I would hope that those children coming to attend this school will be encouraged and taught to do the same. Not only that, but when they do not do that, I would hope and expect and assume and demand that those children face the proper repercussions. If they are choosing to act like adults in a poor manner, they need to be addressed as adults acting in a poor manner. And I'll coach anyone you want. If you want to bring anyone to me directly, I would love to help coach your troubled youth, because there's a problem here. And I'm sure you don't want a problem in your school, because this is a very good school with a very good reputation and a very good area that should not have this occurring here repeatedly, wouldn't you say? Wouldn't you say? I would. I'll save that for now, and I'm going to observe. And I hope that you will take very seriously the comments of the people in front of you, because they're the ones whose children are here. Their children are the ones who face the fear. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I meant to say, prior to public comment starting, during public comment, unfortunately, we're not able to interact or engage in a dialogue with speakers, but there will be, should anyone on the board or in administration feel the need to respond to anything that's said during public comment, there will be time for them to do that at the end of the meeting. So I genuinely appreciate just keeping that in mind, and everything is heard and also noted. Kim Mears.
Congratulations to all of the new board members. Kim Mears, Skippack Township. I'm here also to speak about the concerning incident, and this isn't the first incident that we've had recently where there were injuries that had to be addressed. So to me, it feels like we're reaching a boiling point that seems a little concerning. I'm concerned for the parents, the teachers, the administrators in the building, and the students, because as we know, if to access learning, you need to feel safe. I watched the policy meeting in November, and bullying was brought up. But I was concerned with some of what I heard from administration. We were told, or the policy members were told in policy, that the high school is working on more positive behavioral PBIS intervention supports. That's great, but I'm not sure, well, actually, I would like to see, and then there was conversation that administration said they would look at data. That also, of course, is what we need, but I'm very concerned that for years, and so, you know, I'm not washing my hands of this, I've been on the board, but I'm asking the board to really ask administration to be crystal clear with what they're going to do to address this, because for years, we have been having this conversation, and it just seems to have reached a critical point. And I do appreciate, I did hear you, Ms. White, in policy, push at that a little bit and really say, let's look at, I think we need to do something above and beyond what we are currently doing. So I do appreciate that. I'm asking that information is shared, not just with the board members, because as you can see, the community is very concerned. We want our community to feel safe, so I would hope that there'll be communication, not just through the memo, but in a way, I'm not asking for details that we aren't, are privy to, but what I am asking for is, what are the positive steps, the steps that are going to be taken so that community members, students, and teachers can feel safe in the knowledge that their students can go to school, be protected, of course, our teachers should be protected, and I appreciate everybody's hard work during this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mears. Joanna Strowman.
Friday, I had to watch my best friend be attacked, and then I was running through the halls, looking for someone to help me, and there was no one around. And it wasn't 10 minutes until after the attack that I saw a single security guard. And I just want to know what you guys are going to do to protect us, so I don't feel unsafe at my school. I had to run into a room and beg them to lock the door, so I wouldn't end up like Gianna. This has happened so many times, and it happens again and again, and you never look at the root of the problem, which is the kids. Start with the kids, start with the problem. To feel unsafe in this school is an understatement. Being attacked, being attacked, no one in this school should have to feel like they can't go to a class and walk with their friends, and have to feel unprotected while doing Every single day, we have so many security guards guarding the school, and one day, there's no one, no one to protect you, and no one to stand by your side, and no one to help you when you're going through something like this. No one should ever have to feel like they can't go to school and live a normal life. That's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I would just like to acknowledge the three young ladies that just spoke. It is not easy to come to the podium on a good day, when there's something positive and uplifting to share. So to the three of you that just shared some of your thoughts in a very frank, straightforward manner, I just want to extend thanks and appreciation, and I will encourage our administration to seek out and meet with you, and I'd like to do the same, to have further conversation about what's occurred. I do appreciate you feeling courageous enough to come to the podium and share those thoughts, so thank you.
That was the last definitive public comment. I echo Dr. Russell's sentiment, and I express thanks for the bravery that these girls have shared with us tonight. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to speak? Just remember to state your name and municipality, please.
My name is Aspen Bradley, Skippack Township. I haven't been here in a very long time. Many of you might remember my name or my face. Hopefully, you remember me. But I haven't been an active member of, I'm still a student in PV, like being truly transparent, but I'm online now, because as stated just before me, it's not just physical unsafety or danger that is going on in the schools. There's a lot of threats going on from students to other students, and parents to other students, who feel as though you don't belong or you shouldn't exist, things like that. And it's, I was speaking with a board member last night, no names, because, yeah, and one of the things that I will say is that when you can have creative, not creative, constructive and supportive environments, some really beautiful things can come from that. For example, this quote that I ended up saying from that conversation is, "I think that if possible, everybody, everyone should strive for a life of grace and empathy." Some other things that I ended up saying in that conversation are that I can't say it's easy for anyone. It's just complicated in different ways for different people, and for some, it's more complicated than for others. "I can't begin to comprehend the complications you have in life compared to mine, especially regarding stresses of PV politics, but at least I can recognize that you have those struggles and appreciate what you try to do, and I offer support where I can." That's the bare minimum. And I feel like people need to recognize that. The bare minimum of life as a human is to be there for other humans. You exist as a social animal, is the best, most basic way to explain humanity. You are a social animal. And there is, part of that is social meaning interaction with others, meaning community. If that community is gone, then part of your basic existence isn't there. I don't really know what else to say, but thank you.
Anyone else? Sir, are you from Perkyomen Valley in Limerick Township?
Yes, Perkyomen Valley, Limerick Township, yes.
Limerick is not one of our townships, unfortunately.
Okay. Can I speak?
Unfortunately, only residents of the district are allowed to speak during public comment, and so I apologize for that. But any of us after the meeting would be happy to have a conversation with you.
Just because this has affected not just here.
That's absolutely understood. So, but with regards to your public comment, I would say Springford would probably be the more appropriate place to have that. Thank you for coming out tonight. I appreciate it.
I'm going to try to read this off my phone. Hi, Amber Dorr, Skippack Township. Welcome new board members, and a huge thank you to those that remain on the board. This is an important, yet difficult, time for the PV community. You must definitely have, you most definitely have a tough job ahead of you, and at times it is a job that comes with little or no appreciation. Some in the community tonight might be inspired, while others in the community might be skeptical. However, based on the PV Forward slogan, we are all made to believe to be hopeful. I heard over and over that the mission of the new board will be to move the community forward. When I looked up that definition, "forward," Merriam-Webster, it states "near, being at, or belonging in the forefront." Another definition is notably "advanced or developed." And yet another definition, excuse me, is "moving, trending, or leading toward a position in front." This all sounds fabulous and what this community needs and wants. So my first point is a positive, but it comes with question. Just a few weeks ago, after the November 7th election, there was a policy meeting, obviously, I'm not used to mics. For those that do not know, it was decided that books with pornographic content should in fact be removed from PV school libraries. I was one of the many community members that was for the removal of these books since the initial conversation began. I know there are current board members and newly elected board members that called anyone in favor of removing those books "book banners" and fought hard against removing any books, even using that term "book banners" in a campaign. I'm curious as to what the reasons were for the recent post-election change in mindset. Just a few months ago, they were adamantly against removing books. If you could, as a board or Dr. Russell, outline what the change in direction was, what the process will be for removing those books, and a list of the books that will be removed, I think the community deserves the right to know. My second point is one of concern, and obviously, we've heard about the violent attack on Friday within the walls of this here school. We have heard years at PV, the focus on social emotional learning. My question is, is it actually working? PV has added many counselors with an expense and implemented SEL, but has it worked? In any business, and in the corporate world where I come from, when you are working a strategy and have a focus that isn't going in the right direction, you pivot and shift your focus. I think the schools need, and administration need to take a hard look at the direction you're going. Your failing students, like we heard tonight, that want to come to school, feel safe and learn. Where are the SPOs? I'll stop there, because it's going to ring. Good luck. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Bill Clark from Skippack Township. Dr. Russell, thank you for sharing those facts at the beginning of the meeting. I think the more facts we have, the more productive this process will be. I feel better, based on what I heard from you. I am here representing my two children, who are in Perkyomen Valley School District as we speak. They've expressed, I think, a lot of the fears that many of you have heard from your children, and a couple of the things, a couple of the values that I like to instill in them are justice and safety. And while I recognize there's due process following this incident, and that no one can comment, of course, on an ongoing investigation, but I would like to request, and I hope that all options are still on the table, including a criminal investigation by state law enforcement. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Strowman, Hannah's mom. I wasn't really planning on getting up and saying anything, but my daughter is so brave, and I thought, if she can do it, so can I. Hannah, she's a really sweet person who always wants to help everybody out, and so is Gianna. And, this is Gianna's mom. She kind of blacked out as she was watching Gianna get beat up, and she ran for her life, she felt, and she was locked in a classroom while the girls were out there screaming and banging on the door. And she's been sleeping with me every night since that happened, waking up multiple times, screaming and crying. I spent the whole day on the phone trying to find a counselor that she can go work with, and she's scared to come back to school, because on social media over the weekend, the girls are saying that she's next, she's one of the next targets. And I don't know, I don't think as a mom, I can send my daughter back here if those girls are in the school, and I don't think it's fair for her to have to come back here if those girls are here.
I'm Schwenksville Township. My name's Shayna Obsina. My daughter was the victim, and that's no call any mother or any parent should ever have to get. And, you know, it's hard, because when I came to the school, the police officer was like, "You cannot, you don't want to see it, it's so violent." the police officer was like, "You cannot, you don't wanna see it, it's so violent." To watch this teacher counselor hover over my child and protect her from potentially getting even worse. Was harrowing. Over the weekend, numerous amount of videos kept coming in. And although it's a catch 22, right, you, it's extra evidence, it's extra angles. But it's, it's so hard because there was nobody, nobody there. No, no security guards. It took so much time. And in that time, I could've hurt her even more. I work for MCIU and I know that in that facility, we have walkies. So if there's an emergency, we can contact somebody. There was no emergencies, like nobody, no, none of the students would go and ha- ask for help. Nothing. And I think that Mrs. Russell was very right. I think we need to educate our students in how we can come together and so that they can get help and not this, this doesn't happen again. I don't know if it's to hold arms or lock arms or, and three other students going, trying to find extra help. But to have other kids have to run for their safety and lock the door, it's just not acceptable. I appreciate your time and there's more I could probably say, and I don't wanna take up any more of the time, but I just don't want this to ever happen to another person again because this was awful. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you both. Is there anything else at this point? Okay, so seeing no other comments, uh, we're gonna move on to section two, which is reports and presentations. Uh, 2.01 is the student liaison's report. Ms. Tremba.
Good evening. As the holiday season approaches, there are many events that our students are participating in that we are excited to share. Firstly, we would like to congratulate our brand new girls wrestling team on their first ever scrimmage last week. We are proud of them for being a part of this school's history and we wish them the best of luck in their season. Our other winter athletes are working hard as well and we'd like to encourage the community to support them. Upcoming events this week include boys and girls basketball, boys and girls wrestling meets, and boys and girls bowling matches. We would also like to encourage you all to support Perk Valley's musicians. The high school band, chorus, and orchestra holiday concert will be held on December 14th. Our musicians have been working tirelessly on this music since August and we wish them the best of luck in their performance. We would also like to extend a happy holidays to our community, specifically to those who will begin their Hanukkah celebrations on Friday. Finally, in light of recent event, of recent events, I do not think it is appropriate for me as a student representative to not discuss the actions that occurred on Friday. Not only the actions that occurred on Friday, but the actions that have occurred since the commencement of school in August. Since August, our students have faced physical threats, physical altercations, derogatory comments on social media, social and mental attacks on their wellbeing and on our community, many of which came from our own community. As a representative, I've seen it from both sides. I have witnessed the behavior of the adults in our community at these school board meetings. I have witnessed the behavior of our students in school, online, and out of school. I would like to remind you, the adults, that our students' behavior is a reflection of your behavior. Our students learn from you and I would hope that they would learn compassion and kindness from you. I'd like to remind you how far a little kindness can go. And I'd like to thank those of you who have conducted yourself with respect and have supported our students. As we approach the future of PV, I hope that the safety and kind, the safe, sorry, my apologies. I hope that the safety and wellbeing of our students is put at this school board's highest priority. And I hope that the students out there remind, remember that we are one, that we are all Vikings and that our actions and our words impact others more than we know. Thank you.
Ms. Tremba, thank you for your leadership and also for your bravery in speaking up the way you did tonight. It's really appreciated by not only the community, but also the board. 2.02 is a president's report. There is not one. 2.03 will be the superintendent's report, Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Ms. White, and I too would like to extend thanks, uh, Claire, for your words there and the message that you send. So I, I do have a little bit of heavy stuff in my report tonight, but I'm gonna go light with it because I think we need that tonight. Um, and I also wanna mention that as a follow-up to some of the conversations that I've had with individuals, parents, and individuals directly involved in these alterca- the altercation, I have offered to have a superintendent's type roundtable, to have conversation about or from parents' perspective and to get their views on the experiences of their students currently. So when I send a newsletter out this week, I will share some additional information, but I really welcome any conversations and a willingness to discuss further with our community. So with that, I have just a couple of items that I'll move through this evening. While I'm going to welcome Dr. Dietrich in a second, I do wanna first recognize new and returning board members. So to Ms. White, to Mr. Liggett, Mr. McKinney, Mrs. Sadler, Dr. Weston, I congratulate you for prevailing in the election and look forward to working with you. Thank you for your willingness to serve the district. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Kurt Dietrich, who is here in Dr. Smith's seat, if you've noticed that. And while the board approved his contract as an interim assistant superintendent, he has not formally been introduced yet to you or our community. That will also come in the newsletter this week. But I just wanna share, I feel very fortunate to have Dr. Dietrich work with us for the time between, um, Dr. Smith's departure and the employment or appointment of a new assistant superintendent. Dr. Dietrich comes to us with a lot of experience in education, most recently as the superintendent of the North Pan area school district for 13 years, prior to that assistant superintendent, principal, assistant principal, and a science teacher at the high school level. So he also taught chemistry and biology, we have that in common. But in addition to those experiences, I have a relationship with Dr. Dietrich through working at the tech school these past years and as one of or two superintendents in Montgomery County. And I've really appreciated his approach, his knowledge, his experience, and the value he brings to conversations and what he contributes. So I am very excited for our administrative team and for our school district to have Dr. Dietrich work with us, um, for this time between Dr. Smith leaving and a new, um, assistant superintendent. So, um, there's a little bit of additional information here on the slide, but I really wanted to give him a warm welcome and extend again in public my appreciation for his service. So thank you. So I wanna talk very briefly about building level scores. This is a data point you may be aware of. Maybe you've heard about building level scores. They are published on PDE's website. So I'm gonna give you a very brief lesson on these building level scores because it's another data point that helps us to know as a school district, how we're doing relative to other districts. To begin though, building level scores contribute to the evaluation of our professional staff. Under Act 13 of 2020, which is an update to Act 82 of 2012, we have data in the evaluation of our teachers. So we think about what they do in the classroom during the day and that's this Danielson part of the pie chart. But we also consider how our students are achieving and growing and the percentage of our students that graduate and the percentage of our students that come to school on time. All of these things contribute to a building level score, which comprises 10% of a teacher's evaluation. Some teachers, most teachers, not all teachers. It really, we could get into the weeds, I'm not gonna do that. I just want you to know, when you hear about a building level score, yes, it's a rating about a school and it is based on achievement and growth and attendance and graduation rate. So what I wanna point out to you is that if we start with the high school, last year, the high school's building level score, if we looked at other high schools in Montgomery County, was 12, that's over here. We ranked 12th. This year, our high school ranked fifth with its building level score. That's a really nice improvement. And we saw signs of that in some of the academic growth that I shared last month, in some of the achievement improvements. Those are good things on the part of our high school academically for our students. As we move to middle schools, last year, our rankings were a little bit higher than where they are this year. Um, and East and West switched. We're monitoring that closely. And these are elementary school rankings. So they're building level scores of 92 elementary schools in the county. These are, these numbers are where our elementary schools fell. So again, this is another data point. And we don't look at single or individual data points. We look at lots of data to develop the picture of how we're doing as a district or how we're doing as a school. This particular data point is one that's public. You may see it, you may hear about it. It also contributes to the evaluation of our teachers and principals. You'll hear more about data when we get to the January presentation. In addition to thinking about future readiness and how we're doing preparing our students for their future, I wanna call out our North Montco Technical Career Center students who were recently recognized in the National Honor Society Ceremony. So here we have the group of high school students, our PV students that attend North Montco on a regular basis and the programs that they're a part of and their recognition for being in the National Honor Society. And in some cases, it's two years, in some cases it's even three. So congratulations to each and every one of these students. We talk about supportive schools and some of the activities we offer our students are intended to help them connect to school, to feel supported. Lots of winter concerts coming up, as was mentioned earlier, um, beginning this week. And you can see them listed here. I strongly recommend, if you have the time and an interest, they are really enjoyable. Um, the high school concert, which is really the culmination of, um, all of the concerts and includes all three ensembles on the 14th, includes band, orchestra, and chorus. And it is really a beautiful performance at, at East this year on December 14th. Lastly, I would like to call out some of the strong partnerships that really are emphasized and come through louder and clearer at this time of year. Lots of giving, so we have our PV Power Packs Holiday Shop where parents can come in over at East in the library and shop for their children at no cost so that they can provide gifts to their children. We have efforts at East to gather winter clothing. We had coats donated by Bergy's Auto Dealer. Lots of coats, enough to support all of our schools at some level. A very generous contribution that happens year after year at this time of year. Skipback holds an annual pajama drive. They dedicate and donate these pajamas to students in need. West is running Stuff-a-Bus, that's coming up, where they fill a bus with toys for students who are less fortunate than some others in our community. And the high school's key club made donations to the daily bread food pantry. Just another partnership, a little bit different from those that I've just called out, is with MCIU. There's a resource expo for parents of exceptional students that really introduces us to all sorts of resources that are available. That will be held actually tomorrow night at the MCIU, the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit in Norristown. So while it's a slightly different sort of partnership, it's an important one for parents who may be interested in learning more about the resources available to support their students. We had Zenon Janicki, who is a PV graduate, organize the preparation of 70 meal boxes for Thanksgiving meals. We had NHS students who helped distribute those meals at the Bus Circle on a pretty chilly day and also had some support from Iron Bridge Charity and the PV Power Packs. But, but again, a wonderful effort. And Zenon is doing that again at Christmas time for, for the holidays, the winter holidays that families celebrate. And at this point, because I give my report this night and not next week, I'm wishing all a happy, healthy, and peaceful holiday season. Whatever you celebrate, please enjoy. Thank you.
Dr. Russell, thank you. 2.04 is the solicitor's report, Mr. Subers.
I have no report.
Thank you. And, uh, 2.05 is board and district committee reports. Does anything, anybody have anything to add or to comment on? Seeing nothing, we'll move to, uh, item 3.01, which is the approval of the consent agenda. Uh, items that represent standard routine business of the board are included in the consent agenda. And then I move.
Uh, if, if anyone desires a, an item to be removed from the consent agenda, they may request that, that occur. Otherwise, these items will be on the consent agenda for next Monday night's meeting.
Seeing no revisions, I'll move that forward then. And 4.0, uh, section four is the education section, Mr. Fountain.
Thank you. Uh, 4.01, Education Committee of a Hold, and I will turn it over to Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. Fountain. This evening, we do have a number of items for your consideration. We would like to move the approval of the High School Program Planning Guide forward. And for that presentation, I'd like to have Dr. Moss, uh, high school principal, please lead us through the presentation. Dr. Moss.
Thank you and welcome to everybody, welcome to the new members of the board. So program planning is actually a process that we go through each and every year around this time. And one of the things that we do, we, we look at the guide that we have and our guide presents information to parents and students about courses that we offer, about our graduation requirements, about timelines for courses that would be picked for the following year. And in order to prepare for that, we actually ask our departments and our teachers to spend some time in the fall looking at their courses that they offer and to see are there any revisions that need to be made to prerequisites? Are there courses that they wanna offer that they don't currently offer? Are there things that maybe that we offer that maybe we shouldn't be offering anymore? So part of the process that we're gonna be going through tonight, talking about tonight, are some of the changes that are going to be recommended. Now you'll see some new courses in this presentation. The new courses actually, tonight is just an overview of the, the courses. If the board so chooses to approve these courses next week, the curriculum will actually be developed after the approval. So right now it's an overview, but we will then develop things further and ask for resources further if the resources that are required. Part of the process, big part of the process is, this really involves the high school staff. The teachers all give input, they give input to the administration. We then bring it to the Education Committee of the Hall, which we are doing now. And ultimately, then the board looks to approve any changes that are made. So the first thing we're gonna talk about tonight are some of the courses that we're looking to remove. Part of this is due to the fact that over the past several years, we've been actually looking to be more inclusive in our programming for students. The honors physics class that we're looking to, asking the board to remove, actually for the past five or six years, has been the exact same curriculum as our AP physics class. The students have actually been in the same classroom with the AP students at the same time. time. They've been scheduled at the same time. So, the, the science teachers are actually asking that we remove that course, because it doesn't make any sense to have both courses. And then we're also asking that the academic chemistry be, be removed. As I said before, we've been looking to be, be more inclusive, and last year, we actually revised social studies and English courses. In previous years, we revised math courses, and even before that, we revised majority of the science classes, the Earth, Earth Systems classes and the biology classes, to remove the academic levels. We're looking to remove the academic chemistry, so that it is more inclusive for students, and so all students are receiving the same core chemistry standards, and all their needs are being met through the classroom. One other course that we're looking to remove, and you'll see an addition related to this, is in our Technology Department, it's our introduction, Introduction to Engineering Design. This is a project Lead the Way class, and while we're looking to remove it here, we're actually looking to sign our own engineering curriculum. So, this would be the first class in the sequence that we all, we currently offer, and we're looking to change that, and you'll see that on one of the subsequent slides, the replacement course for it. So, there are a number of new courses that we are proposing for this year. The first is an AP Macroeconomics class. About five or six years ago, we approved a economics class to be taught at the high school. This course has been very well received by students, and the students, many students in, in that course have actually asked to take the AP exam, although we are not preparing them for that. So, we've been listening to their feedback, and we would like to offer that, that course as a course, rather than trying to catch them up being in just the economics class. So, this would be for grades ten through twelve, it's a one-credit class, and it would be in, in addition to the other social studies AP classes that we currently offer. In our Business Department, we are looking at adding a second level of our Genius Bar. If you're not familiar with our Viking Genius Bar, this is an outstanding program in which we have students signed up for a course in which they work with one of our business teachers, and they learn how to not just fix our, our Chromebooks, but they do other things. They do passion projects, and they do a lot of hands-on work, and they're working with some of the new technology out there. This Viking Genius Bar two will, will provide more coverage for the district, because we're looking to have a second level, so that students who were previously in this and have gotten a lot of the experience already, that they can work independently and provide coverage, so that we can help have our Genius Bar covered throughout the day, so that in case there are issues, we can, we can get the computers fixed. Another course that we're looking at is through our PE Department. As you may know, we have our Unified Sports, we have Bachi, and we also have Unified Track. And this kind of follows that, and it's having a unified physical education course, in which some of our special education students would be paired with our regular, regular education students, so that they would work together and provide a more inclusive environment. And this is, this is the Tech, Tech Ed class I was talking about, the Engineering Design, which would replace that Project Lead the Way course that we're going to be looking to delete. This, this would be a PV created engineering class, be the first in a series of courses that we will, we will add. And finally, Freshman Advisory. We've been noticing over several years that we have a need to have an advisory period for some of our students. This would be a data-driven course in which students who might need extra supports in math and ELA would be providing them with an opportunity in their schedule to get that, those extra supports. In addition to new courses, we also have a couple of courses which we like to change, revise the names. Our current sequencing for courses after Algebra II, most people would think it's Precalculus, or Honors Precalculus, or AP Precalculus, but in our guide, it's the regular Precalculus is currently called TrigAlgebra III. So, we'd like to rename it Precalculus, so that there's some continuity between the levels, and it's not as confusing to students. It's really a very, the same course as a Precalculus class. And then moving along with the fact that we have actually done away with our academic level in chemistry and physics, physics was previously done, we wanna change the names of what we used to call College Prep Physics, College Prep Chemistry, to just be, being called Physics and Chemistry, because as we know, not every student will be going to college once they graduate from high school. So, we don't want there to be that College Prep designation in front of them. Some other revisions, we participate in some dual enrollment classes, and one is with Westchester University, it's the Advanced Geoscience Class, and part of our agreement with Westchester includes a change that we need to make to our guide, which is that they would receive college credit by taking an exam in the course. So, that's a change that the college is actually making for this course. Another change is AP Studio Art, and we're looking to align our description in the guide to be what AP has in their, their guide. And Viking Genius Bar one, we're looking to update the language in the, the guide a little bit more, so, so students are really aware what the expectations, expectations are of the course, and what they'll experience. These four, these four English class revisions come from the fact that those, the English nine and English ten courses underwent curriculum review a couple of years ago. In that curriculum review, and they revised the curriculum, which the Board approved last year, some things were changed. So, these revisions actually reflect those changes to the curriculum. Some other revisions are really to some of the prerequisites for, for our courses. We ask our teachers to look, do the prerequisites make sense what the courses are? Are the skills that the students need in this course, is there a course before it that they have to have the skills from? So, there are quite a few changes here. So, in Honors Earth Systems, currently, it says Current Completion of Geometry. They don't use geometry in Honors Earth Systems. They really don't need to have that as a prerequisite, so we ask that that be removed. For Honors Biology, a similar type of thing. Honors Chemistry, we did have it in there, Successful Completion of Algebra II, and we're now looking basically to say concurrent enrollment in Algebra II. It's great if they have the Algebra II skills when they're coming in, but they don't have to have them walking in the door. If they are deficient in some of those skills, or they're learning them currently, the teachers can certainly bring the students up to, up to speed and make it work, and they can review some of those skills. And for AP Physics C, we did have it saying, um, that they had to take AP Physics and Honors Physics and Honor, and Honors Calculus, AP Calculus, and we're saying just completion of AP Calculus, I'm sorry, of Calculus and AP Physics. We're making it more inclusive, it doesn't have to be the AP Calculus. We wanna make it easier for students to be able to take the courses that they, they want to take. More revisions, we have changes to Physics. AP US History, AP US History, there was a comment in there that said they have to have an A average in the US History II Honors class, and have to submit a writing sample. We wanna remove both of those. Algebra I, there was a recommendation, they needed a teacher recommendation. Not needed. Algebra I's the lowest algebra class or math class we have here in the high school. Students need to take Algebra I. So, Algebra II, it did say that they had to take Algebra I and Geometry. We're removing the Geometry recommendation for that, so just Algebra I. And you'll see there are other recommendations too. For Honors Precalculus, AP Precalculus, AP BC, AP Calculus BC, it did say the students had to get at least a score of a three on the Calculus AB exam. We wanna remove that. The teachers don't feel that that is actually needed, because part of Calculus BC is a repeat of Calculus AB, so if they didn't have a three, they could still be successful in Calculus. And Statistics, the teachers felt that they didn't have to have Algebra II in order to take Stats. One final part is that every year, the Tech School provides us with their changes that they're making to their program, program programming. They also look at their programs to make sure that their, their programs meet the needs of the students. So, they're looking at actually adding a sports rehabilitation and a physical therapy They're revising their biomedical technology course. Adding some health sciences, these, they look at industry standards and say, what do our students need to be successful in the future? And these are some courses that they are seeing that are, or some clusters that they're seeing that would be very good. And Internet Technologies. So, these are actually dictated to us from the Tech School and given to us. In previous program planning guides, we actually had these flow charts, so it was very easy for parents then to see, if you're currently in Algebra I, what's the sequencing of the courses? So, you don't have to really go through every single thing, so we're looking at re-adding those in to the program planning guide, and that's for the four core areas. And we also have courses, one of the, one of the graduation requirements is, students must take a course that fulfills a technology credit, so we wanna add the flow chart. How do we decide what courses actually qualify as a technology credit? And there are a bunch of questions that we actually ask, and they're yes or no, yes or no questions, and if the course goes through this flow chart, and we're able to answer the questions adequately, we can grant the student a technology credit for the course. We wanted to be transparent about what that is, because a lot of times, there are questions and it's not out there. Any comments or questions from the Board?
Thank you. I sent some questions in advance, I'm not sure if they were sent over to you or not, but I have some questions on specifically slide fifteen. Just trying to understand some of the barriers. Can you tell me what student takes Statistics at this time?
So, there are many students that take Stats. It's not just students that are honor students, it's not just, um, not just, it's mostly eleventh and twelfth graders, but it's actually, I wanna say it's a pathway that's open to any student.
And for, for years, you, in order to take Statistics, you needed to have Algebra II completion with a teacher recommendation, correct?
Correct.
So, could you take Statistics now in ninth grade?
You could. It's, it's feasible.
And how would, how would that student project in a class where most students have Algebra II and a teacher recommendation? What barriers being removed to have a student enter Statistics in ninth grade and be successful at that class?
So, so what this, what this is trying to do is that students don't have to take this as a fourth-year course. If they don't wanna take Algebra II, they could take this as a replacement to Algebra II. That's, it's really part of the basis of this.
But now we're, but now we have no, so there is a requirement then? Because right now, it says no requirement, no prerequisite for taking Stat.
I don't have the book in front of me, I think there is a grade level requirement still, I have, I need to look at that, Mr. Saylor.
Yeah, that's fine. AP History revision, AP History, uh, AP History II Honors, and A average, and excellent writing skills. And so, we have that changed now to students may be required to write a, a sample. All students are gonna be required, or some?
So, the current guide actually says students may be required to submit a sample. We're looking to remove that. That, that really hasn't been the practice in the past, boy, I've been in this position fifteen years, I don't know that we've ever required that as a piece. We said, why are we having, why, why is that in there? Doesn't need to be in there.
Do you still need to take AP, do you still need to successfully have an A in US History II Honors, or no?
No.
So, now who has access to taking AP US History?
Any, any student who wishes to.
And what research do we have that says that a student that, for instance, got a, a D in US History Honors is gonna be successful in that class? What barriers being removed to open up that class to be a more successful?
That's a fantastic question, and we actually, our, our counselors are very adept at looking at, there's an AP potential that's released by the College Board, based on students' PSAT scores, and they can see if a student gets a certain score, or does, does a certain thing on the PSAT, that these students would be successful in certain courses. And AP US History is one that's listed very often for most of our students.
So, for instance, when a student's asked, so, so that's different from, what you just said is different from what's being presented. Presented is, we're going from needing to have an A average and excellent writing skills to students may be required to write something, and where they may not, and completion of US History only, but now you're saying, but students have a quality PSAT or SAT score would then be, a counselor would say this would be a good class for you?
So, our counselors actually meet with students when they do program planning, and they actually do have conversations with students about whether students might do a good job in a class. That's not the only thing. Students can actually, there are overrides, even currently. So, if a student wants to take AP US History and they not recommended for it, they can certainly take it, and a parent can override it. We've certainly had situations like that. We're trying to make it so that the students, parents don't have to go through these procedures if they wanna take such a course.
So, we want the student to be successful in that course, without dumbing down the course?
Of course.
Okay. So, Honors Precalc, um, I remember taking Precalc, difficult course. We're going from needing to have an eighty-five or better in Algebra II Honors, correct?
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're wiping that out, and we had that in there, because there had to be data that showed that students that, for instance, got a sixty-seven in Algebra II really struggled at Honors Precalc.
So, that's a great, another great question. I don't know that there was actually data that showed that. We didn't, we didn't collect that data that said that information. It was more of a way to make sure that if a student's in the Honors track, they stayed in the Honors track, and we're looking to remove those barriers. So, if a student is, is doing fairly well in a course, and they, they want to challenge themselves up, that they can challenge themselves up.
Yeah, but Precalc's a little different. You know, if you're struggling in Algebra II, that Precalc might not be the best move up in that next step, that wouldn't be the next step forward.
If I may, so, I think sometimes what the barrier is, is you have a student who's taking, say, Algebra II, they haven't yet attempted to take an Honors course, but they're, so they're taking Algebra II, they're doing very well in Honors II, or Algebra II, but it's not the Honors course. So, maybe they have a ninety in Algebra II, at the, at the, we're not calling it prep, but at that lev, at that Algebra II level, we don't wanna create a barrier where they feel like they cannot now challenge themselves to move into that Honors track. So, some students, they are like, okay, I don't think I could do Honors, and then somebody starts working with them, and they feel encouraged, you know what, this year, I'm gonna try an Honors class. They do well in it, and then they're like, oh, next year, I think I wanna try two Honors classes. So, it gives them that opportunity. The nice thing is they work with the counselors, and the counselors help talk them through and really guide them to picking the appropriate classes, but we don't wanna have the language that's going to deter them or make them feel like they're not able to do that, just based on language, because a lot of times, students, if they truly have a motivation and a passion to take a course, they supersede what the expectations are anyway. Children typically don't pick a course that they don't like or don't wanna take when it gets to these Honors and AP classes. They're taking them because they have an interest or a passion, unless there's another issue, and there's some pressure at home, and there's somebody telling them that they have to take every AP course. But from a school standpoint, we would never say, you need to take all these AP classes. It's not how the counselors work when they're trying to help guide and, and give advice to students.
But if you had a student who was in Algebra II Honors, and let's say, got a sixty-six, barely passed, really struggled, they're now eligible to take Honors Precalc?
So, what would happen is, the counselor would say, we don't advise that, and the parents would come in, and they would talk with the parents and the student, and they would say, look, based on your trajectory, this is a course that is not recommended. However, as a family, you can choose to take that course, and at the end of the day, if the parents are telling their kid they can take it, they can take it, and it's giving the parents that choice and that right to take the course. But the school's still doing the due diligence of saying, hey, we don't think you should take that course, but they're not gonna create the roadblock of not giving them the opportunity either.
If I may, the other, the other piece of information I would just like to call out is that we view our students as individuals who grow through their four years in high school. And sometimes we hear about, for example, if I think about college, freshman year at college was really tough, there was a transition, I needed to acclimate, my grades weren't so strong, but they got better as I went along, because I became a better student. We believe in a growth mindset, and we believe in our students maturing, so some of this is also supportive of that philosophy. We want students to grow as students, and to get better at realizing, how do I learn? Metacognitively, what do I need to do to actually learn and be successful? We want students to want to challenge themselves. In some of these cases, there were prerequisites that were not necessary to be successful in the course. I'm talking really about content. You don't need geometry to be successful in Earth Systems. You don't need geometry to be successful in Biology. It's not necessary. So, we're trying to actually eliminate some of these things that have been around for a really long time, and eliminate them so that we open it up to students who... a really long time and eliminate them so that we open it up to students who, through those conversations with counselors, discussions with their parents, their own intrinsic motivation, their current teachers, we hope will make good decisions and continue to grow as learners and challenge themselves with the coursework that they select. So it really is a combination of considerations.
So when we, when the board voted a couple of months ago to go from four tracks to three, we asked to see data from other school districts and what next steps were. And that data has not yet been given to the school board. And now we're, we're quickly removing some barriers that were already removable. Because as we heard that a parent could override, right? We already knew that was a capability. But in some of these tracks, and now we're going to three tracks without knowing what the data looks like that the board, previous board requested and didn't receive, and now we're taking some of these revisions. You're saying these barriers weren't, weren't needed, but they were there for a reason, right? They were there for a reason. And they could be overridden. A parent could have that conversation with a counselor and a building principal and say, I do think my, my child is, is ready, although they're struggling in, you know, Algebra II, that they're ready for honors pre-calc when they want to take it. That's fine. But we know when a student enters an honors course and then struggles at that honors course, maybe the next best step is not to go up a step in that mathematics course. You know, statistics is a very difficult course. To take away a total barrier from that, we, from a teacher recommendation to no prerequisite at all, that's a big jump, especially when we're going from core honors and advanced. One of the issues that some board members had when we were going to the three tracks is what some people said was a dumbing down of the educational aspect of it to fit into those three tracks. And I don't think any board member wants to have that. But this seems really quick to, you know, next year will be our first year of three tracks and massive, you know, revisions to the code where we're, we're using the term inclusive and we're using term barrier. And those are great, you know, sounding words. But when we look at specifically some of the recommendations that are being, they're complete 360 to what we've done for a long time and has been proven successful without any data. I would be really concerned, you know, for, you know, statistics, honors track, and AP US History, where we're, you know, we're not going from, you know, revise the US History honors and A average and excellent writing skills. We're not going to an A to a C average or A to a B minus. We're getting rid of that. And so although we're getting rid of that, that barrier that says, hey, to take this course, you need to have an A, what we're doing is potentially, and we won't know this for a couple of years, we're going to be putting students in a position that might make them really stressed because they're in a class that's really ardent and it, and it's not really for them. But we feel good because we, we removed the barrier. But that might not be what's best for that specific student. And we won't know for a couple of years.
Can I just ask a question then to Mr. Saylor's point? Should, first of all, I don't know that I would ever voluntarily take any of these, just to be clear. With the exception of maybe history. But I think the question that I have with regards to removing the barriers and to what I think Mr. Saylor's point is, should a student have not met the previous criteria and they've elected to take one of these classes? Is there a timeframe in the beginning of the school year as the class starts that there is an evaluation period to get your feet wet and then this student could then maybe move to a class that's more appropriate? They think to themselves, you know, I made a mistake here. This is not what I thought it was going to be. I can't do this, that type of thing.
So we do not currently have a drop ad period where students can move around. We do however, the counselors and the principals meet weekly and we discuss if we see issues with students and their placements. And we do look to see if a student needs to be moved around a little bit because we do want students to be successful.
So at what point, if there's no drop ad period for a student to make the choice, at what point does, you know, counseling and the teacher administration step in and say, this isn't working out for you? How far do you let the student go not being successful before you're, you're able to reposition them?
So that's another great question. So it, once again, that varies, right? Sometimes there'll be students that start the year and they'll realize in the first couple of weeks they're in trouble. And they might, might go to their counselor and the counselor will bring it, we have a scheduling committee. They bring it to the principals and we discuss, we look at data, are they, are they getting extra help after school? What is their academic history like? And we look at various different things to see, you know, do we want them to stick it out? Do we want them to try other things first? So we try not to let them go too long because we don't want students not to do well. We try to make changes as needed and not just because a student doesn't want to take this course anymore or because it's not what I thought it was. But we do look at that data. There, it's very rare that, you know, in January that we'll be having those discussions. Usually it's earlier in the year.
So I guess, again, you know, to Mr. Saylor's point, these previous prerequisites were there, I guess, probably to alleviate having to have those conversations because the idea would be if they met one criteria, they'd be successful in the next class. Is there, is the idea of a drop ad period something that you're willing to entertain if we remove all of these prerequisites?
So I think the drop ad period is kind of, I want to say, a little troublesome because our margins are very tight when it comes to scheduling. There's not a lot of space to make moves. And there's some courses where there's only one course, one section for the course. So making then changes to a student's schedule is virtually impossible. So we haven't had a drop ad period, once again, for, for many, 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 many years, as long as I've been here, and that's about 19 at this point. We can certainly talk about it further, but that hasn't been the direction we were looking at going.
So I could see how a drop ad period would be difficult at the high school level, especially with teenagers who, you know, they might see that they don't necessarily like the teacher at first and before the relationships are formed. I could see that they may use it not in the way that it's meant to be used. But I'm thinking, could there be a set date that teachers are expected to kind of come together and decide and look at what the data is? Like, could there be more of a procedure put in place to kind of look at that? Because I do, I mean, I do understand the, the idea of students potentially taking courses that they're not set up for. But I have also seen students sign up for these courses that wouldn't, my daughter's a perfect example. She's doing AP Stat and she was not, she didn't have the teacher recommendation piece. She had the Algebra II piece. And she's doing phenomenal in that class. And I think, and she's, she was not recommended to take, to skip a year in math. And she did anyway, and she blew it away. I think sometimes as parents, we know what our kids' potentials are and we need to have that flexibility. And I think that's what you're trying to give us here. But we also want to safeguard too that we don't have kids just taking things. So if there's a way to kind of maybe meet in the middle, I think that would be, and I think maybe having a safeguard time period so we're not getting to January.
I have two questions. You said your daughter's taking AP Stat?
Yes.
It's a great course, but she didn't have her teacher recommendation?
No, she didn't.
How's that possible when they need a teacher recommendation? So we have current building plans that aren't being followed. Do you need to take geometry to graduate?
Mr. Saylor, just to interrupt there if I could. She, parents can override.
Yeah.
A recommendation. So we weren't violating anything. I don't want you to have the wrong impression there. No violation.
Do you need to take geometry to graduate?
You do not.
So like the revised for Algebra I minimum grade C, we, we do know that, you know, geometry, if students struggle in Algebra I, their success rate in, in having a strong grade in geometry is potentially questionable, right? That's why we say it's a C.
So as a former mathematics teacher, I actually will dispute that. Geometry and Algebra I are totally different ballgames. Totally different. People nodding their head in the background. You don't, I don't see a correlation between your Algebra I grade and your geometry scores.
Why have we had this there?
That's why we're asking it to be removed.
If I may, I, as a student, I've taken many of those courses, all of them except two. I, I would like to echo Mr. Saylor's point about the prerequisites. I think some of the prerequisites are in place because it guarantees the success of the student. I have seen students skip classes without prerequisites and struggle horribly. And that takes a toll on their mental well-being. And I believe that this school board has said multiple times, the success of our students is our priority. Having fundamentals in math and having fundamentals in English is what will set students up to be successful adults. And some of those prerequisites are in place so that students are guaranteed to have the fundamentals of math mastered before they move on to a higher level course. So I would just like that to be considered, that we talk about it in scoring, we talk about it in SATs, we talk about it for graduation rates. There is a correlation between mastery of math fundamentals and English fundamentals and student success.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions, not in line with prerequisites. The first one I have is with regards to the academic removal section. I'll ask the same question that I asked when we asked the last time to remove the academic section. And that is what, and maybe you can provide us with an update as to what's been available to our teachers in terms of supporting full integration with the removal of the academics class in the English, on the English side? And then what is planned for this other science piece?
So with the English classes in social studies last year, we actually incorporated a number of co-taught classes. And because we actually got rid of the academic level class, we were able to move students into sections so that we were closer to natural proportions. So in a class of 25 students, there might be four or five, maybe six students that have an IEP in which they, or which they need to have the co-taught class. We code each student to see, do they, do they need a co-taught environment or not? So we try to provide supports based on what the students need. For the academic chemistry, we currently have about 13 students for the past several years, I think last year was four students, who are looking to take that course. This is not a course that we have a lot of students opting to take. We have a robust science program where students are able to take forensic science and other science classes, that students who are not STEM-based students, they're not really looking to take this academic chemistry course. And we're not using our resources to the best use, in my opinion, by having a course that has four, five, six students, when we can actually probably support those students in a, I don't want to say prep because we're not calling it prep anymore, but in a core class with chemistry, but by providing more supports. Mr. Weston, Dr. Weston?
Yeah, I think I'm asking along the same lines with regard to the transition from the academic track and bringing that into the prep or the core class. And just, you know, I, you may, you may have addressed this a little bit already, but what has, you know, in terms of the difference in the, in the, in the, in the content between the academic and the prep for chemistry, how do the, how do these differ in content or how have they differed in content? Do they cover the same material? Is there a difference in pacing? How, how does this work?
So there, there is a little bit of difference in, I almost said, content itself. The academic chemistry is not, does not have a lab period associated with it. The, the core chemistry class does have a lab period. So the students are doing more, more hands-on work. There's one, one period assigned each cycle, each six-day cycle that they're having, having labs. Whereas the current academic chemistry, that's not built in. So the teachers are trying to figure out ways to have those labs that are meaningful to the students.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I question, I question the value of a chemistry class without a lab anyway. So I'm glad to hear that. And, you know, if, if, if they can work a way to, for, that, that, you know, is accessible to all the students, that's, that's terrific. Is there a grade level difference between the students who would take academic versus the students who would take prep? Would, would the prep students be like ninth and 10th grader and the academic be more 11th and 12th?
It's basically been the same grade levels. Typically, typically the current pathway, and it's not a required pathway, is Earth Systems in ninth grade, Biology 10th grade, Chemistry 11th grader, 11th grade. We have many students who start Biology in 10th grade and then do Chemistry in 11th grade. We even have students who do Biology in 8th grade, come up to the high school, and they're doing Chemistry in 9th grade. So it really, really varies on the needs of the students.
Then how the sequence typically operates? Is Biology first, then Chemistry?
Typically, yes. But once again, the only one that's fully required out of that whole group is Biology. And that's because it's a Keystone course. The other courses are not required. They can take any one of the other science classes that we offer.
You've already done the transition in physics, from what I'm understanding from your presentation. You've already done the transition from having academic prep to a single core. Tell me how that transition has gone?
The teachers report it's gone fine. They have not, that it's gone well, that they have not reported any issues with students that, because, once again, the students who might have struggled are taking courses that actually have more interest. So once again, once we get to the higher, this higher level of science classes, if you're not a STEM person, you're not as likely to take them. And they're taking courses such as the astronomy courses or the meteorology classes, the forensics class, zoology. So some of those other courses are what's really more popular right now.
Was the lab situation the same with the academic physics?
It was.
There's, so there was no lab in academic physics. Prep physics had lab and now everybody's taking a class with lab?
Correct.
I've always had concerns in general, as you know, about removing the academic track completely, especially in regards to reading and math. Science, though, I, I must say, I agree with Dr. Weston, how do you not have a lab? I think the hands-on piece is, is needed for all students. It's an academic track, I mean, especially typically students who have academic needs, they learn best having a multimodal approach, but I digress. I am liking that, at the very least, you're doing the freshman advisory. I feel like that's a way to have a small group opportunity to have some re-teaching, possibly some pre-teaching on some skills. So my question is, is that type of opportunity going to be available? And maybe it is and maybe I'm just not remembering, at the other levels within the high school? Because again, I, I get a little nervous. I know co-taught, and we're doing a big push on co-taught and inclusion, but there are still some students who need to be in that small group environment. They don't do well in a group of 20-some students with two teachers. They do much better in a small group environment.
So we're looking at starting this year with the freshman advisory, getting that set up. And then if it's successful, then looking to implement it later years.
My other question actually was about freshman advisory. Can you talk a little bit about who will be targeted to participate in that and whether or not it's going to need to be a requirement? Obviously in middle school, everybody does advisory, so can you speak a little bit about the difference?
So it's not required. It's going to be, we're going to look at data of students. So we're going to, we're still working on the, the exact criteria. We're looking at students that might not be at grade level, that might be below grade level or have certain needs they have that are not being met. But it will be a data-driven decision and looking at individual, not, not just one, one data point, multiple data points. And, and looking, because we want to make sure that students, when they leave here, are able to do what they want to do. So we want to try to take the students from where they are now and get them up to grade level so they can be successful in their courses. So it's really looking at data.
So I guess, that being said, is it possible to bring back, once this is developed more in terms of what it will look like, bring back and explain a little bit further about how it's shaken out?
Sure.
Because I think my concern with it is with that basis, that there might be a stigma then attached to having to be in that advisory class as a 9th grader and that it's almost like a punitive, sort of like a punishment. And I think that it will be, it'll be really important to let that be purposeful time, almost like an enrichment as opposed to remedial. So I, I'd really like to understand, because I think culture-wise, I don't know that that does students that would require that any service.
Almost like, it almost does the opposite of what we were trying to with academic. I see where you're going with that.
Are you, are you using STAR as that, as that, as that rating system for the, for this course or are you using something else that comes out of the middle school?
We're going to be looking at all kinds of data. We'll look at STAR, if there's Lincoln data, we'll look at, at grade data, PSSA data, various different data points, not just one data point. By teacher recommendation.
Are there any public comments, Mrs. Mears? Yeah, Mike, yeah.
So I just have two questions. One, so I'm really trying to also understand removing academics. We did ask last year for data. So we're talking about data-driven decisions. Do we have data that supports removing academic, those, that tier? Is that propelling our students, all of our students, to be more academically successful? Is that propelling our students, all of our students, to be more academically successful? So that, as a community member, that's something that I've asked for, or that I'm asking for, I'm just curious. And then, secondly, can you explain what the difference is between freshman advisory and instructional seminar? Thank you.
Sure. Instructional seminar is actually a special education course, which is written into a student's IEP, which does provide support to students, once again, to get them to grade level. Freshman advisory is a non-special education course. So it might be for students who need those supports but do not have an IEP that support them.
I have a few different things to point out, but I actually am in support of switching from academic-level sciences completely to technically not prep at that point, but the base being just not having academic, because it's been proven, I don't have the statistics in front of me, because I didn't expect this to actually be here, but it has been proven that with science courses that end up having like different levels and having a level like academic, it becomes, that has to be, the topics have to be spread out a little bit more, but less material is actually being covered, so it ends up being summarized almost, which leads the scientific information to be less accurate, because you're not getting that full idea, and you're missing a lot of parts to make it fully, like the picture full. In terms of requirements, I have, I can support both viewpoints that have been shared on the board, but it really depends on what the true intention and support of how it's carried out of, if you are to remove requirements. Because if it was in the pure intent of truly giving students the autonomy of choosing where they want to go with their education, you also have to then implement even more supports to those students that may end up having consequences of that. Or, for example, I wasn't very successful in some cases my freshman year, because I will blame COVID mostly on that, because it was a very, very strange time, I call it the dark ages. But then sophomore year, I actually studied full-time at Montgomery County Community College, where I did relatively well in all seven college courses that I did. I passed all of them, I got college credit, and I actually have, all of those are transferring, all of those college credits are transferring to the college that I am going to attend starting next year. So it's one of those things where you really have to look at the full picture of requirements and really be able to, sorry if this sounds all over the place, it's a really psychological and truly, I guess, cultural aspect of looking at how to support and trust those students with their education. And obviously, there is the sense of counselors being part of their family, but it's, it is definitely something that would need to be discussed and figured out how to approach it differently. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? You're fine, Jonah, go ahead.
I have a question about the technology education department, the shifting from Project Lead the Way. If I remember correctly, Project Lead the Way allowed the students the opportunity to gain college credit from RIT, so why would we be shifting away from that? What does the introduction to engineering design offer our students that is better than college credit from RIT?
So historically, our students have not qualified for the college credit from RIT. They have to take a cer, a test at the end of the year, and we have not had a very good success rate at that. And the teachers feel very strongly that they can actually implement a curriculum that is much more based on what students who want to go into engineering will, will need in the future, unfortunately.
I just wanted to just discuss a couple of things.
Just let us know who you are.
Yes, my name is William Alexander, and I'm a resident of Perkiumon Township, sorry. I was not here at the beginning of the meeting. But to Mr. Saylor's point, I very much agree with his point, and I don't agree with him a lot, but I do, and I'm just stating a fact, I agree. As far as the academic standard, we have academic, academic standards in place for a reason, because not everybody can learn at the same level. And if a student is not doing well in a certain course, but decides they want to accelerate their learning in a, in a, in a course that, I mean, that really will have a much more rigorous academic workload, then we have to be careful about that. But the best point was made by our board rep, student board rep. I have seen it as a teacher in another district, where students who were placed in classes that, in reality, with due respect to the students, because I do believe in giving every student an opportunity, maybe they shouldn't have been in there in the first place. Now, that falls, you know, on a couple areas, not just counselors, but it falls on parents as well. But we have to consider the mental health of our students. Too many students, I have seen, over in my 16 years of education, I have seen too many students who want to, who do have the drive to take that large academic, heavy academic workload, but have no idea of the reality of the workload that's involved with that stuff. So if we're going to go in this direction, I ask the board to please advise the district that it should be up not only to the counselors, but as well as the parents to, that the counselors and everybody else should understand that if you're going from an academic to an AP class, the workload isn't, I'm not saying that I'm not putting down the academic classes, because there's a workload there too. But please, in the end, it's for the best of our, of our students and their mental health and wellbeing, so please, let us be careful about it. And I'm glad that there are kids that, because there are kids that can be successful. Would I have ever taken one of those courses? No, absolutely not. There was a reason I was in academic algebra and geometry, okay? And we also have to be careful. So I would also like the consideration of a drop-add period, but we have to be careful with that too, because I have seen where kids, they start out at that higher-level course, then they go to another course in the drop-add period, but they're already behind in that because of, they're learning a different skill set. So I'm just saying to the board, please consider all of, all of those points. Every child deserves to be successful, and they will be successful in their own way when they learn at their own pace that they will feel comfortable with. That is what I have seen in 16 years as a teacher, so thank you.
Are there any other public comments? So I, I guess, Dr. Russell, to wrap up all of that conversation, is it possible, prior to next week, when this goes forward, that we are able to get some information about guardrails that would be put in place with these changes?
Certainly, we'll debrief, and we can share with you. I, I'd like to unpack further some of the data that's been requested. I know that last year I shared some literature. We do have schools in Montgomery County that we've worked with who have taken this step, actually in advance of us in many respects. We've, we've had the removal of academic levels in other areas for some time now. We saw some improvements this past year in terms of achievement data, so a little bit more specificity around the data that would help, to Mr. Saylor's point, that would help the board to feel more comfortable is also something that we can provide, if we know what it is we would like to have. In some cases, these are tested areas, in other cases, they're not. So Dr. Moss and I can debrief on that, and we can think about the data that are available. But if there's anything we want to call out, it would be helpful for you to do that, in addition to some of the literature. I know I shared some papers last year, I'm happy to pull those up again, about how the experiences for students shift and the success rate on their part. I'm happy to provide that again. We can also talk about the support, because I do think that's a really important point. Yes, we want students to set themselves up for a rigorous experience, and we want to believe in our students and their success, we need to have the appropriate supports in place, that's understood. So we can talk about those three aspects, or follow up on those three aspects, if that would be helpful to the board. So I don't know, Mr. Saylor, if there's anything specific around the data you're looking for, achievement, growth. I regret that I don't remember exactly the data that may have been requested in the past, but happy to provide it this year.
I will email you and Ms. White.
Okay, thank you.
Going through the list, like I think there were a lot of good points made this evening. I do agree with like the geometry versus algebra, they're, they're two different beasts. But like, to Mr. Saylor's point, pre-calculus is very, and algebra do go hand in hand. So maybe, you know, for example, just looking through each of these, again, with a fine-toothed comb, because in that one in particularly, I could see how, instead of saying it be 85% or better in Algebra II Honors to completion of Algebra II, maybe it should be to completion of Algebra II at an 85%, so that the child doesn't necessarily have to have Algebra II honors, they could be in Algebra II, and they could bump up to honors, pre-calculus.
As an advancement.
Do you know what I mean? Like, but going through each one and thinking, okay, what do they need to have for that foundation? Because you're right, they do need to have the, but there are times, like you don't necessarily need to have the geometry piece. You definitely don't need to take biology and have geometry at first. I, I know that has been an issue for years with students who have wanted to have that. But there are certain ones, like that one, looking back over them stood out to me. So maybe just going through and maybe revising a couple of them to think, what do you need to have? Obviously, you do need to have algebra for pre-calculus, but you don't necessarily need to have honors algebra to get into honors pre-calculus, but you do need to at least pass algebra to get into pre-calculus.
Right. So I, I appreciate, you know, the points that have been offered tonight, and we certainly don't want to be coming across as taking an extreme step forward. We want it to make, we want it to make sense and be something that the board is comfortable with. So we will go back, we'll review some of what we have proposed at this point, and think about it in those ways, based on the feedback from all board members this evening, and we'll come back with some data, the literature, the guardrails, and then maybe some reconsiderations around those prerequisites. Is there anything else that administration should think about?
The one thing that I would like to mention, as far as with the recommendations of the courses and the prereqs of the courses and that kind of thing, the one group that does not seem to have as much of a voice now in those is the teacher who's with that student all year long, to be able to say, this is a good choice for you. I think that teacher recommendation, I know from myself, it always carried a tremendous amount of weight. So to take that away seems like we're taking the voice, to some degree, of the teachers away in the choices that the students are making.
That's a, that's a good point, Mr. Fountain, and I, I'm wondering if, with the data that you are going to revisit, if you could maybe bring some information with regard to, up to this point, the overrides that have happened, independent of the prerequisites, how those particular students have done? Because I feel like maybe those would be the students that, it's not going to, you're not going to get a whole brand-new group of students that want to take AP pre-calculus, it's just, I, that's not going to happen. So I, I'm just, for, for some, I mean, I had an army trying to help me with AP pre-calculus, and I actually had to step away from it. So, you know, regardless of what your ambition is, in, in addition to the teacher that has to live with it, then to Ms. Tremba's point, there's also students that are able to truly accomplish and be part of that class with other students that are struggling, and I think that a lot of times that detracts from the success of, of some of our higher learners as well. So if you could take a look at, you know, those overrides, how successful they were, if there was, if it was a misstep or, or an overreach or something like that, I think that would be helpful.
Sure.
Dr. Reed Dietrich, thank you.
Thank you, board and community, for your comments on that, and we will move then to the next item, and that would be the instructional calendar. And on the instructional calendar, we had Dr. Russell, Dr. Parr, the entire cabinet, the entire administrative team review this recommendation, and we presented it this evening. There are some things that I'd like to call out on it as I move this to the next slide. We are starting again in, in advance of Labor Day. We are recognizing various federal holidays there that, you know, are listed in concert with the federal holidays. There are some other holidays celebrated by members of our community that are now resulting in a, a day off from school. We did have a lot of consideration over those in-service days and over the fall, winter, and spring breaks, and then, you know, we have the end date as established there. We are moving this a little more rapidly, if you will, in the sense of our own calendar, moved it to December, because we're trying to get a calendar established in advance of the full-day kindergarten registration, and we'd like to be able to start that full-day kindergarten registration a little bit earlier than normal, just so we get a real sense of the numbers, to be able to properly staff and have the necessary space in order to accommodate full-day kindergarten. So we are looking to have approval of this here in December, rather than in January or February. Dr. Russell, is there anything else that I didn't cover, that we wanted to highlight here?
No, the only, the only thing I will add, thank you, Dr. Dietrich, the only thing I'll add is that this calendar really mirrors the current calendar this year in some of those new celebrations that are recognized in the calendar, and some of the different holidays that we've learned are important to some of our community members, so they're represented here. We have two Act 80 days, which was the case this year, four half-day in-service days, plus those three at the end of the year. So that's very similar to this year's calendar. And if all goes well, our students could potentially finish the year on June 10th, if all goes well.
Is there any board comment? Do any members of the community have any comment?
I saw that specifically, it was Columbus Day, was still labeled as Columbus Day, but I believe that it was, as of this year, proclaimed as Indigenous Peoples' Day. I would, I'm not completely sure, I've seen conflicting information, but I do recall it being proclaimed as Indigenous Peoples' Day by Joe Biden this year. So I'm not sure, and I would appreciate if that could get looked into, just because there is negative historical issues with Columbus Day being called that, and I'd appreciate for that to be kind of looked into. Thank you.
Administration will certainly follow up on that, thank you.
It's Columbus Day on the federal government's website.
All right, we do have, just for informational purposes, Voyage 23 highlights, and that included some information on the high-impact teaching strategies, some more information on what the schedule was followed that day, and the highlights of that, and then we just have a few still shots here of some activity that particular day. Is there any comment on that? If not, then we'll move along. So the enrollment and staffing projections, and Dr. Russell, I'm going to throw this one back to you. We've been working on this, as we want to make sure that we can properly staff. So, Dr. Russell, you have some comment on this one?
So what we've, we've presented here to the board, beginning with the elementary level, is the current enrollment, well, we presented last year's, excuse me, 2223, current enrollment for 2324, and this is real time, this month. And then we have projected out next year by adding 11%. And typically, when kindergarten advances to first grade, we see on average an increase of 11%. We've also increased current kindergarten enrollments by 11%. We anticipate an increase based on full-day kindergarten. If we go to the next slide, what you see here is a 20% increase in the kindergarten numbers only, not first grade, so that's still an 11% increase. That's pretty typical, we always use 11% K to 1. We are incorporating a 20% increase here for incoming kindergarten students next year because we are implementing full-day K. And then what's really important for us to call out, based on these data, would be staffing needs in response, because at this point in the year, we try to give you some sense of what we're projecting in terms of need. And if you look at the numbers below, if I, I'm going to click back to 11%, if I look at the 11-
Oops, sorry about that.
Thank you. He is. We see that Evergreen is projected to actually need- We see that Evergreen is projected to actually need two fewer staff next year based on the trends in that building, and that's with an eleven percent increase in kindergarten and first grade. Schwanxville is set to need three fewer, skip-back two more, and then, I'm sorry, one more. I'm looking at the wrong column, one more, my mistake, I'm sorry. And then South is set to see the need for one more staff. So we see a minus two, a plus one, a plus one, a plus one. So the net is a plus one. With twenty percent, you see below the projected staffing changes, Evergreen would go down one staff member potentially, and that person would be shifted somewhere. So I don't want anybody to get the impression that administration is projecting or recommending furloughs. That's not where we're headed. We will use these staff in other places. But you see, looking at that staff column, the green line across the bottom represents the difference in staffing need. So if we go up twenty percent, worst-case scenario, we really cushioned it based on some conversations with board, we would need two additional staff members. If we go to the middle level, we actually see the projected decrease in need of staff at the middle level by two. Now, it gets tricky at the middle level because we have subject certifications and we have teams, and there's symmetry with all of that. Now, this year, we were able to actually make some of those shifts, and it worked out pretty well. We have to keep our eye on this, but straight numbers, this is what we're seeing, and we have some ideas churning, but we want to develop those further. Straight numbers, this is what we're seeing. Worst-case scenario, twenty percent increase in kindergarten due to implementing full-day. We will need two staff at the elementary level. The middle school right now, real-time, is projected to need two fewer staff. So there's a net zero. So that's what's being communicated right now in these very early projections. If we move to the high school, you see the projected change. Again, we're observing our enrollments overall declining, and that's moving now through the high school. So as we talk about positions and we think about preliminary staffing projections, because we like to get those out there to you as early as possible with what we know today, aside from kindergarten, the early intervention numbers, which are numbers, data points that help us to know, how many of our youngest learners can we anticipate to come in and need specially-designed instruction or our special education? Right now, from the county, that number's pretty high, it's seventeen. We don't know how many will land in our classes here, but we're monitoring that. So right now, of those two special ed teachers, one is designated for skip-back to support incoming, very young learners coming out of early intervention, and one is projected to support Middle School East, where we see a bubble of students moving up in a district classroom, a program classroom. So we're believing we can work with the kindergarten based on middle school enrollments. Now I'm presenting something different and separate from the kindergarten projections to you based on special education enrollment numbers, okay? And then we would like to recommend two paraprofessionals to in turn support these two new special education teachers. We have also already spoken about four new paraprofessionals to support full-day kindergarten. That would bring our elementary schools up to two kindergarten paraprofessionals per school. Right now, they have one. We would like to introduce two, implementing full-day K, to support our teachers and to support our students in that full day. And then lastly, we've requested a cafeteria monitor to support at skip-back primarily where the enrollment is the greatest. And again, we have to add a sixth lunch in all of our schools, so this person is intended to support that effort. Any questions at this point?
Some questions.
Yeah.
Is there any data from the IU or from Springfield or Satterton when they went year one into implementation, full K, what percentage they saw that jumped? So when we're looking at eleven and twenty, is that what the IU is presenting that happened in other school districts when they went to first year? Have we have we looked at the numbers in Springfield or Satterton to try to get an estimate? Could we be could we could we get higher? Could it be twenty-five? Is there a chance or no?
Hmm. A good question. I don't know that answer. We have traditionally just used our historical data and our patterns, but we can certainly reach out to some other districts and get a sense. And in talking with Dr. Dietrich, North Penn implemented full-day K recently. We can look at how the enrollments trended when that happened, and I can ask some of those other districts, too. Happy to find that. That's a good question. That would help us.
My other my other question was, in terms of the paraprofessionals, in terms of occupancy, where are we right where are we right now in occupancy? So for instance, if the school board allows one hundred and ten paraprofessionals, do we actually have one hundred and ten?
I believe we're missing-
We're at we're at full we're basically we're basically at full tilt there.
For special education, to support special education, yes.
Yeah.
So for regular education, is that different, Mr. Moran?
We're down a few for general education.
Because we're talking about adding two more paraprofessionals.
Plus four.
Correct.
Right.
But we're already short some. They're already budgeted, just not expensed. It's 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 just not expended revenue. But so for instance, is this request specifically you having four paraprofessionals support for full-day kindergarten, let's say we're short five paraprofessionals in total? Are you saying that the next four that get hired are going to specifically go to full-day kindergarten?
Not necessarily. We do typically prioritize some of our special education students based on IEPs require a one-on-one. That's a priority, and we have to we have to make sure that we provide that. So we do prioritize based on need. If one school has three of four and another school only has two of four, then we allocate in that way. So we do make every effort to prioritize to serve our students, meet our students' needs most effectively.
And is this request for the six paraprofessionals, is that with the mindset of how life would be if we actually had full occupancy with our current paraprofessionals?
Yes.
Okay.
And and we really feel like they bring value to the experiences of our students and really support our teachers. They are valuable team members that we, as a district, have really come to not only depend upon in some respects but benefit from. So that's our our theory of action is we've seen really effective support when we have paraprofessionals, especially with some of our youngest learners now being here all day, aside from IEPs that sometimes dictate we have to have them, we have to provide them. They're also very helpful in those settings, so that's what we're aiming for.
So with the paraprofessional job postings, are the job postings posted alongside where the placement is intended?
You know what? I'll ask Mr. Moran if he can weigh in on that. I'm not certain about the answer there.
Does it speak from here?
A mic would be helpful, sorry. Yeah.
Just use that.
Thank you.
So the current postings for paraprofessionals are general in nature, so we put out that we have posting or positions available. And then once we conduct the interviews, we try to determine where the best match might be for those individuals. Now, we that was our strategy because we had multiple positions open. We're currently down to one opening for special education, and I believe we have two openings right now for general education. So as we've now decreased those number of openings, we're at a point where we will start to make them specific postings. So we'll say we have a position open at Evergreen to support special education. So we're moving in that direction.
I think I asked that specifically because of the four for kindergarten. I think that's a much different individual than-
Absolutely.
-some of the other placements, so.
Those would be positions that we would specifically post, very similar to library. Library paraprofessional, it's a specific position that is posted as a library paraprofessional.
That was the question I was getting to.
Gotcha.
We're going to fill we're still short, but we're going to fill these four first.
Well-
If it came to that.
Yeah, I mean, and again, I appreciate now what you're saying, and yes, we would base we would base that on how they were posted and how we were seeking candidates. We do specify kindergarten paraprofessionals when they are when we're seeking to fill those positions. So there is some specificity there in how we would place people that are interested.
Yeah.
So this is this is one of those summary charts that, again, we've gotten in the habit of sharing with the board that indicates some of the possibilities moving forward. And I know now, maybe I've saved Mr. Weaver a little time when he gets to these slides in his presentation, but this is some of what might happen based upon, right now, what we're projecting today based on the data we have and what we know. This could change, and it will particularly or likely change after the data presentation in January, because that often prompts some slightly different recommendations. And then lastly, we're investigating these positions. These are some of the things that our administrators request, and we really push for justification and data to support those. The counseling resource is one that I am working with high school staff on, realizing we have contracted specialized counseling at the high school that is being supported right now with grant funds, and those grant funds run those grant funds run out this year at the end of the year. So thinking about some of what we've just experienced and what might really get at the root cause, we're thinking about that as well as that service, that resource, if you will, as well as the possibility of ADNA students to support with some of the incidents and infractions that occur, as well as restorative practices that are being implemented to follow-up and combine with the assignment of consequences. Gifted services, technology, education, and music instruction are all areas that may be impacted positively through scheduling changes, so we're looking at that very carefully, too. We'll have more to share with you as time goes on a little bit further. And then our athletic director has been advocating for a strength and conditioning coach, believing that that will offset and proactively prevent some injuries from happening. So that's something that that Mr. Felty is hoping for as well. So that's on our list. We'll talk more about that as well.
When we talk about the strength and conditioning coach, can we I know I had asked some questions about the turf and the percentage of knee injuries that are on the new turf compared to the same similar time period from non-turf side, or how many knee injuries do we have compared to other school districts that have the same type of turf, not just turf, but the same type of turf that we have? Our football field has different turf than, let's say, the Springfield turf. And so in a football perspective, not necessarily field hockey, but in a football perspective, you're you're starting to see what I would call ghost injuries happen, where a player makes a secondary move and without being contacted with another opponent or another player, they go down with some type of torn injury in their knee.
I think we shared some data. I can look to other districts to see-
Yeah.
-what they might have, too, and then how the turf might compare. But but Mr. Felty did have some conversations before turf is tougher for us to come up with, but we'll work on that. Sure. Any other questions for us regarding this information? So what we would hope for is that with some feedback, and we'll share this in the memo this week, that you would feel comfortable and well-informed to approve the program planning guide changes that have been proposed, as well as the calendar next week.
And then, Dr. Russell, I'm not sure if I made a mistake there, but I know that on our agenda, we had listed there some trips also, I think. Would those be going to action next week, then?
They will, and we will talk about those when we get to those on the agenda.
Got you.
Thank you.
Okay, so 4.02 was the approval of the high school program planning guide. Are we comfortable with moving that to consent?
I'd like to ask it to be held off consent.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we will do that. Number 403, same thing with the school calendar. Are we comfortable with moving that to consent? Any concern or questions? Then I'll move that to consent. 4.04 is a motion to approve high school program, oh, excuse me, 4.04. There it goes. An international trip to Europe as presented. Do you we need to go ahead and take action on that tonight?
You do not. Next week is fine, and these are these are planned in advance. This one actually is scheduled for summer of '26, so next week would be fine. It does give students an opportunity to raise the money that they might need to raise to support the cost.
And then we will move that to next week?
So if it's okay to go on consent, unless the board has questions, that would be great, too? Great, thank you.
4.05 and 06 are also the same thing, so we can move both of those to consent as 4.07 is the enrollment report, which was already given. And that concludes my section.
Thank you, Mr. Fountain. Mr. Saylor, business.
Thank you, Ms. White. We'll start the business section off with 5.01, the finance committee of the hall, with Mr. Weaver. Mr. Weaver, you and I, sir, are going to have a quick section, much faster than section four, right? We're going to start the new school board off with a win.
This is your chance, Mr. Weaver. You can win the competition.
Both slides, by the way-
Jim, I have a lot of questions prepared for you.
Both slides are forty-five slides, by the way, which is, I think, you know-
It's fifty-nine.
Oh, it's fifty-nine, that's a little more.
All right, so welcome, everybody. Thank you, and the fun continues, right? Mr. Fabrizio, if you would come up here. We're going to we're going to knock out Joe's section a little bit quick here. We've got a couple of items that we've listed for review, quick review for the board agenda. There are no motions on some of these things, and we do have a big, major ask at the end. So we'll move forward. Mr. Fabrizio, if you want to hit up some of these items real quick.
Good evening. I think we went over this last week, the upgrades at Keenan Stadium, we're proposing card-access side gate and changing the runners' gate over to a card-access as well. We'd also like to put barrier gates at all the main entry points of the campus. That'll help us secure the roadways for events such as plowing, graduation, fire drills, and any other security concerns to keep vehicles out while the kids are on the roadway.
And I'll come back to your public comment, then, so go ahead, Joe.
Along with the upgrades, we'd like to install conduits going from the current concession stand area to the fieldhouse, and then from the high school to the lower turf field. Putting these conduits in will allow us to pull fiber to these locations to add things such as cameras, telephones, or anything that requires a data point.
One of the reasons that we're moving forward fairly quickly is we'd like to recommend that we go to a safety and operations committee format so we can get into the details of these items. We feel specific to these three items. It would be beneficial for the safety and operations committee group to go around and actually go through some of these things. I'm not doing that, by the way. Oh, okay.
Easy, Joe.
That was weird. Okay, all right. So those three items, we'd like to get into a little bit more depth. Mr. Fabrizio and his staff have done a wonderful job of going about these operations behind the scenes, but we like to bring them forward. And the committee section, if that's okay with the school board, I know, Ms. White, we had you had asked before, we think that it would be beneficial to move forward with Kind of speed it up that way. So if there's any questions or concerns on those three items from the board-
So just to be clear, you're not asking for approval for any of those items? They're just on the docket for conversation at at committee.
That's correct.
Fabulous.
Yep. All right. Any questions or concerns from the board members on those three items?
I'd like to speed your app, buddy.
Okay. Any questions from the community members? Okay, great. So go ahead.
Now comes the ask.
Yes.
So we've been, you know, down this road before with the concession stand, and I've pulled as many parts out as I could that we can handle internally and went out for a proposal with KPN. It's kind of an all-encompassing solution. They would do the heavy lifting. This is kind of like a clip from the plans, showing the concession stand as it would be. We have two ADA bathrooms on the right-hand side, moving my grounds crew into kind of the middle, keeping the trainers' carts to their right. And then the concession stand will basically flop from where it is now to the opposite end of the building. So this price through KPN's around $291,000.
So from the perspective of the school board, we have been working on this plan and this project for about- for about four years at this point in time. As Mr. Fabrizio said, we have pulled out various components. Initially, about a year and a half ago, we came forward with almost a $500,000 plan associated with this. And so as Joe said, we've been taking little pieces. We took the sewer part away. We got, we did a really good deal with the school board to get that done, much lower than the estimate that was in the original cost. We redid a lot of the electrical components for a much cheaper price as well. And we finished off the asphalt of the, the stone area as well. Those were parts of the first look at that project. So at this point in time, we'd really like to push, we do have money set aside from the original athletic fund, bond issue from 2020A, which was associated with the turf installation, and we'd really like to get this project done. So we are recommending now to go out to get this done through KPN. Questions?
I'll open it to anyone else. Of course I have questions.
Yeah, I have one quick question. The, the two bathrooms that are, that are there, are they going to be year-round heated and fully open for usage?
On the electrical plan, we are calling for heaters in those rooms, so that is a possibility.
So then the grounds crew would, could possibly be using that facility rather than going to the high school?
That is correct.
Great.
So the first question is, Mr. Weaver, how much money is already set aside from the previous bond?
So we have about $725,000 remaining in the original bonds for the stadium project.
With what else pending?
At this point in time, that would be about it.
Okay, so this would be covered under the original bond?
Yes, the original bond was $5 million, and we spent about 3.2 million for the original installation of the turf. And then we've had some other projects that we've drawn down on that. So we have about $725,000 at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you for that information because that's a lot of money left over on that bond. I would personally request that this go just back to committee, now that there will be a committee, just for one final deep dive, just to get an itemized, another group of eyes just over on, on the overall. I appreciate all the work that's been done. I think that we're really, really close here. I just think that since there's going to be a committee formed specifically for safety and operations, we do just one last touch on this piece because it's such a big, a big ask.
And I do have one question. So I'm really thankful for these ADA bathrooms. I think we have a lot of individuals who come to different events at the stadium and trying to navigate their way all the way to the back of that stadium is just, it's just really hard for those individuals. My question is, has there been thought to ensuring, we know how sometimes football, for example, gets a little crowded, a little crazy. Sometimes there's a lot of kids that are not necessarily attended all that well. Having, I don't know whether there's going to be security right there, just to make sure that those bathrooms, being that they're single stall, that they're monitored and they don't, it doesn't turn into a free-for-all and they're, I'm not saying that people can't use them, obviously, but, and we're not going to be carding people like, are you ADA? But I don't want it to turn into a place where kids are sneaking in there to get themselves into trouble.
Duly noted.
They're ADA compliant, but they're for everybody. Yeah.
Correct. And, and so that's why I'm saying, like, I don't want a secure, I'm not suggesting a security guard is standing there saying, you can't use it, you can't use it. But I do think we need to consider more monitoring in that area, given that they're single stall restrooms, and that I could picture a group of kids going in that bathroom, shutting the door and getting themselves into trouble during a football game.
May I, a quick question. Would, would something like a red light, green light exterior lighting there address that for you?
Not necessarily, because two or three kids could still get in there and the red light would be on, and nobody would be the wiser as to how long they've been in there unless somebody's sitting there timing them. I'm just thinking there may be, we might want to have a security guard stationed in that area that can kind of keep an eye on the flow of who's going in and out of those bathrooms.
Well, the, the only reason I'm saying that is besides micromanaging the, the security, you know, apparatus that's there, at least if you had a red light, green light system, from afar, you could easily tell whether or not it's been red light for a long time, and that would kind of alert you without having to hover at the doorways.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful. I just don't think it would, it couldn't be our standalone, so to speak.
Understood.
Typically, we leave the lights on the duration of the event and that we don't give end users control of the lighting. So.
No, no, I'm talking about a signal outside, you know.
Almost like a bathroom on an airplane.
Similar, yes.
People are not heading towards the bathroom if it's, if it's occupied. But to, to Ms., to Dr. Campley's point, I think that you're really looking at it more from a, a safety standpoint for nefarious use, as opposed to actually needing it for either a family bathroom or an ADA bathroom, et cetera. So.
Right now, yes.
This given is, is another reason we need to take it to committee.
This will have card access on it. We'll have cameras there. We can be proactive instead of reactive.
Exactly. There's, there's things that we can do because obviously, right now, when they use the bathroom in the, the larger bathroom, there's a handicap stall and it's in a full-size bathroom. Kids are not locking themselves into a bathroom that nobody can see, you know, feet in the bottom and that kind of thing. So yes, for, to stop the nefarious things that may occur.
Okay. All right. And so we'll, we'll withdraw to put it on the approval for the finance committee. So, yes. But that's okay. We'll, we'll get there eventually. All right. So any questions? Again, that's not going to, a recommendation at this point in time. Any questions from the community? Okay. Now, all right, thanks, Joe. This is exciting. Okay. So part of the indoctrination tonight is the five-year projection.
Do not use that word, Jim.
Okay. Part of the scenario process that we have is to try to plan and try to project moving forward. It's time for our annual five-year projection. Obviously, these are assumptions that we've made. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. It's there for everybody to, to look at your own leisure. But what I will say is that we've been working with Frontline, which used to be Forecast Five. We've invested with them about $24,000 a year. We go through and utilize all of their tools at various levels. What I do is I create the assumptions. Mrs. Hurd and I go through those assumptions, and then we contact our frontline people and we say, hey, this is what we're looking at. This is what we want to do. And then we go through each and every line item from a, a 30,000-foot view and then develop various scenarios and then look at where it's at. So for instance, our base assumption will be at a real estate tax assessment growth at a half a percent per year. That's been our standard go-to when we budget. And it's been relatively spot-on with all of the changes, all the assessment appeals, all the rises, all that kind of stuff. We're also assuming a 2% tax increase every year for the next five years. Community, this is not definitely, this is just part of my assumption. So this is not exactly how we're going to roll just for the assumption purposes, because we've got to assume some things to put into the canister so we can get some results back, so we can show them. There are some additional items that we've recognized, and some of these, especially the first year out for '24, '25, you'll see or have seen in the revenue projections already, and you'll see in the expenditure projections for the equal sign which follows this one. So interest earnings, earned income taxes, you know, you all know I have a little bit of a problem with earned income tax. We have to report on that every month. We have to look at that every day in my office. That's just the way that it goes. And we adjust some of those items moving forward. Here's a chart that shows how we base some of those components moving forward. Not going to get into the details, but essentially, this is from the independent fiscal office. They produced this, they've produced this in June 2023. They are scheduled to or may have already updated for this year. Again, so this chart may look different if you're looking at a newer document. But essentially, what this is saying is, is this is tracking the difference between the components that make up the Act One index. Those items create the maximum amount of real estate taxes that we can go out, and they are predicting over the next five years that our Act One index will be 5.3% for next year. We know that. 4.2, 3.9, 3.6, and then we have another year that we just assume that it will be 3.6. Those are subject to change, but for our purposes, as we build this financial forecast, these are critical variables that we tend to look at. There are some additional items for state subsidies. One of the biggest areas, and I, I said this for the revenue portion of last month for the, for the budget, was that the ESB components are becoming more and more of the 2015, 2016 equalized subsidy payment effort that our legislature passed. Little by little and slowly by slowly, over the past several years, they have been backfilling, and more and more of the, of the chunk of our ESB that we eventually get is reflective of that new, new ESB formula. They didn't do it all at once because there are some school districts that get 70% of their money from the ESB. So for them to snap that and for 2017 automatically flip those numbers, there would have been a lot of school districts that would have been in a lot of trouble. So they've eased into it over the past number of years. There are six variables that drive those figures, and we're trying to learn that. Last month, I also said that we were the guinea pig for Frontline associated with this. We have gone through that process. I'm very pleased to say that the subsidy spreadsheet and calculation spreadsheet that they used seems to be working. It's very successful, and we've assumed those items and we've moved those forward. Now, to start and lay out these processes, assessed valuation, millage rates, total taxes, and index, those are all key figures associated for how we're going to drive revenues from a local perspective. Our, this essentially our tax base. When anybody ever wants to come in and say, Jim, how do you come up with these taxes? These four components drive that. We have assumptions in those four variables. I'm just showing you that. Here is a snapshot of our revenue projections. I'm not going to get into the numbers there because they're really tiny. They were tiny on my screen, and I thought they'd be a little bit bigger on this screen. But essentially, it shows growth over time with those revenue projections. And you can see that those are steady, the steady bar chart going up. On the right-hand side is the budget revenue sources and where those come from. Obviously, our taxes levied are well in excess of 75% of that item, of that total pie chart. Here's another cut. Again, these are canned reports that come from the Frontline report. Expenditure assumptions. Now we jump to the expenditure side. Again, we're building a case. This item is from, directly from a letter from the House of Representatives of March 23, which are driving one of our biggest factors, salaries and benefits, but biggest component of benefits, of course, is Peasars. So we do know that that's one of those unfunded mandates, and I'll say it every year, yes, I benefit from that, and workers, employees benefit from that. But that is what we're paying. The estimate is 34.73% for next year. That is in our first look. However, they won't, they will confirm that number for '24, '25. Says they should do it December 1st every year, but they're always a little bit late on that. So about December 15th, December 20th, we'll get, hey, your Peasars rate for next year will be whatever it was, whatever it is. Last year, it was scheduled to go up. It actually went down when they, when they approved that rate. So that's a good idea. But you can see that the Peasars rate doesn't stop. It continues to grow. Again, now it's based upon a 7% rate of return. It used to be a 7.5% rate of return. And so there are a number of factors that go into that that we don't control, but yet they control some of our dollars going out. So it's important for us to try to take a better look at that and try to assume on a more consistent basis because that really reflects and shows in the outliers where we're at. Now, expenditure assumptions. We have health insurances at 2%. However, our first look just came in at 6.2%. However, the past couple of years, we've been at a 0 and a 1%. So Weaver, how did we come up with that? Well, we throw 2% up there and we say, okay, we're going to take a look at that, and that's going to be part of my assumption. Transportation contract at a 2.5% per year per contract. Liability insurance increases by 5% and then 5% over the next several years. Tuition continues to decline over the next several years post-academic. Okay? VOTEC increases at flat 1%. That's a guesstimate. Obviously, there's a lot of numbers and a lot of variables that go into that. Fossil fuels, we have an increase at 5%. However, we are continuing to monitor because we were successful in putting the new natural gas pipeline at West, how that impacts us. And there's a little thing called a demand response cap that generates a total expenditure vibe for all of our electrical use. There are a number of different things that create our electric bill. If you've ever looked at your electric bill, there's transmission fees, there's commodity fees. There's another thing that we pay is called a cap. It's based upon three years average on five days a year. Your usage on those five days go into this cap. And so we're working hard with Mr. Fabrizio and our demand response energy program, NXL, to create better curbs to help try to control that additional whack on top of that. And I think we've been successful for about a year, year and a half. However, we're coming out of a bad spell because we were running our, our energy 24/7 during the pandemic for cleaner, fresher air, all of those things. So now we're coming off of that phase. And of course, debt service comes direct from PFM and Jamie Doyle, who's been up here upfront many times. We just pull that direct from, from the sheets. So salaries and benefits are the top two items. Obviously, those are the biggest focus and the biggest drivers for us. And then each one of those other items, supplies, purchases, other objects, that's all driven by the Pennsylvania School Code that drives those items. Obviously, the expenditure projections there, you can see, those go up in a similar type of fashion from an equal assumption perspective, and then the pie chart there that shows where we're at for 2024. Another way to look at that with that chart that shows the next several years, essentially, what it comes down to is with a two, an assumed 2% tax increase, now this drives, okay, Jim, we start out with this amount of money in the fund balance. What are, where is our base? If we go 2%, what happens to our fund balances? And that lower right-hand chart, it shows that we're eating into our fund balances if those assumptions come correct. This is not atypical of a five-year projection for a school district. Remember, I've been doing this for 30 years, and the best way to describe each and every budget year, I heard something from major books who we're going to have a conversation with from a perspective of, from an administrative perspective in the next week. And he said, I wouldn't say that you have 30 years of experience, and this isn't something totally related, but I can relate it now so we can see this, but you've had 31-year experiences of budgeting. And that is so true because each and every variable that I talk about every year is completely different. The amount of politics that go in in Harrisburg that drive our subsidy payment, for instance, we don't control, but it really directs how we have to react from a budgetary perspective. So it's really unique way and perspective to look at that. So this is my shot this year for this, just to help to get us as a planning guide. Okay, Jim, yeah, thanks. It's great, right? Five years. We'll continue to look at this and monitor this, but we don't revisit this. All right? So this is just for us to look at. Again, here's another way to look at what happens to our fund balances if all of my assumptions become correct. Now, one of the practices that we've done several years ago was, well, okay, where's the max and where's the min? So what happens instead of the 2% base like you just gave us, Jim? Let's go with a zero. See if that gets us for five years. And then let's go to the Act One index. And then guess what? That, that create, woo, sorry. That creates, it's tiring up here, sorry. That creates a, a chart, a flow chart and a line chart that not only takes this into consideration, obviously, you can see what happens with the max Act One index. We're not going there, but it just goes to show you a picture where we'll end up. And there it is. There is the general fund, fund balance over those min and max scenarios. The yellow line item in the middle is the base at 2% tax increases. The red line is with the Act One index max that was from last year, which will change heading into next year. And then the green line is if we go zero for the next five years, what eventually happens to our fund balance. This is not surprising, but at less, at least this gives us that little bit of an area where we can see we can be as high as almost 40,000, $40 million if we go Act One index and all the assumptions become correct. Or we could be negative almost 20 million if we go 0% for the next five years and all of my assumptions are correct. Again, just a picture and a scenario for us to look at. Any questions on that? Again, there's a lot there. I apologize. But again, just how do we plan moving forward? It's a picture. That's all. Okay. Now, moving into the first, the equal sign. So, yes, Mr. Keenan?
What tax rate would put us on the even there? Did you calculate that?
So the, the tax rate, you mean to be perfectly at zero?
According to your other assumptions, but yeah.
Okay, I did not calculate it like that. I would point out to this scenario that eventually we would get to, we would get to a zero and even much quicker if we did 0% tax. and even much quicker if we did 0% tax increases, which again, nothing, yeah. But we would run out of money probably in the next year before I went to 2030 with my assumptions.
I don't know if the previous slides better, but you know, not to run a deficit. You know, to put us right along, no deficit. What would your tax rate be? You don't know.
I don't know.
2.2%, 2.3%.
Yeah, I, I don't know that. I didn't calculate that.
Are you asking without taking from the fund balance?
Yeah.
You're, you're saying.
Balanced, I guess.
What tax rate would you be to have continued revenue increases without borrowing or not borrowing, but taking money from fund balance?
That's, yeah, just makes sense to me to consider. We don't know when we'll need that money.
We could certainly look at that. I, I did not generate this particular graph to reflect that. Yeah, we could look at that.
That's, I, I think we did, you and I did a couple of months ago when I was asking questions, I was just curious about a long-term service debt and our fund balance. So I think I'd have to go back, but I think we, we went back and forth on that one, that one afternoon when I was just looking at service debt. Yeah.
Okay, we can certainly look at that. I mean, it's somewhere in between, right?
Yeah.
Somewhere wherever that.
Two and a half percent or something.
Okay.
Three and a half percent.
Right. And each, each year, the difference multiplies, so I'd have to figure it out, yeah.
You're talking using no money from the, yeah.
Okay.
Like last year, we used a million, correct?
We used a million of unassigned fund balance. We also had debt service fund reserves, Peasars reserves. So we used a, a bunch of different fund balance reserves. But we can look at that. That would be an interesting exercise.
Yeah, and I don't like the, the downward, you know, well, just me. I don't like the downward trend of that, you know, graph. It's, it's not straight. Of course, you can see it's curving, which means it's going faster. Either way, so it's not stabilizing, it's heading out of control. That's all. It's just, it's not very much, I understand, but you know, it'd be nice to have it stabilize more further out.
We could certainly look at that.
Rather than, rather than head us, you know, down in a faster, in a quicker trajectory.
It's not in Mr. Weaver's control, but at some point, some school districts are going to be at over 51% in Peasars. So at some point between now and 2033, state legislature will have to, will be forced, will have to do something because some school districts will be at like 56, 57% of their budget on Peasars. And then you just can't, can't operationally run that way.
Couldn't have said it better. Absolutely. All right, so we, but the neat thing with frontline is I can go back in there and I can adjust a couple of, of numbers in the back and then say, print the graph and then it, it prints the graph again. So we can do that. Okay. Equal sign. So we have some adjustments to the revenues that we presented last week. We have an adjustment for the ESBI frontline through the frontline calculation. It shows that we are scheduled for an increase from our 7.6, 7.5 million dollar up to 8 million. So I'll show that. And then we'll wait and see how the legislature goes through to produce the amount of some of those variables that go into that figure. Remember, we still only have what? A 75% of our budget, 85% of our budget for this current year has been approved.
75.
75%. So there's still 25% of the budget that the state hasn't approved, but we're five months into the budget year. None of that has anything to do with the ESBI, but you know how sometimes when things get a little short up at Harrisburg, they start to maneuver funds at the end of the year? That has me a little concerned. So we'll reflect that and show, so we'll show 500 some odd thousand dollars in addition to what we, what we presented in November and amongst those two areas. Interest earnings, so interest earnings, that's an alternative revenue source for us. Obviously, when we're at five and a half percent compared to last year or the year before, we were at 0.01. That's going to drive some significant dollars. We were over $2 million at this point in time in our budget presentation. We do continue to watch how and watch the Fed and monitor what they are saying. Total revenues, 125,737,497. Again, I'll move fairly quickly through that process. You can see the individual growth and where we made changes. And then here are the alternative revenue sources. Again, we continue to track those. That green bar up top there, that's the one, that's the $75,000 add. So we're at $2 million for the interest earnings. Expenditures, first time you're seeing that. And one of the items that we talked about was enrollment. Dr. Russell did a fantastic job of doing that. Just wanted to point out that this is a nine-year cohort survival method. I didn't, again, I did not create this. George Alt House created this. He used to be the business administrator going back to the 90s. It's a wonderful tool. I've been using it ever since I've been here. This is my 22nd, 23rd year now here, budget year, heading into this. So it's been remarkably accurate when we increase enrollment or when we decrease. So we've been going through the process. The 11% factor is the growth from kindergarten to first grade. That has been historical and that has been proven and that's been very, very reliable. Expenditures, first look. Equal sign, 129,948,694. Salaries, four and a half percent essentially. Benefits, all broken down in the various variable components, which we'll get into. There are back, there are slides in the back here that address each and every one of these, but I'm just trying to stay here on this one. So overall, about 3.5 million dollar growth from budget year to budget year. Quick hitters. So when, when taxpayers say, and you're out in there, hey, what's going on? You can turn to the sheet real quick and you can get a, a quick idea. There are the nine positions that we, that Dr. Russell mentioned. It's in quick summary mode there. It's broken down between salary and benefits. So to that Peasars rate being almost 56% in the future, over 50% right now, benefits for our salaries for what we've proposed are more than the actual salaries that we're paying these positions. Keep in mind, these are, a lot of these positions are parapositions. However, they qualify for full-time benefits. Full-time benefits are $22,000 for, per position. So just to let you know that that idea of the impact of Peasars and health insurance is definitely impacting us already. Salary increases, all based upon contracts, agreements and the Act One Index are in a lot of those contracts. Of course, we do have a solid agreement with PVEA. They are the most members, they are the largest amount that we have to consider. And we've locked that in because of the good work that the school board did for four years. There's the health insurance, the first look number. Now remember, that's different than the assumption because my assumption for the five year, I'm assuming that that number is going to come down to 2% eventually when we hit go. Here, as we go through the, the budgetary process, I'm saying the first look number is at 6.2%. And we're sticking to that for our budget purposes because the five year was, we did it. It sits there and we're moving forward. Peasars again is not yet certified. It's currently at 34 and we're predicted to go to 34.73. We've got some technology increases for lease because we're in the full service mode for one-to-one Chromebooks. Bus contract, we already hit upon and we're holding equipment and some other expenses steady for now. We do have a debt service increase per, per PFM. Now, going through each individual object code, object 100 salaries, there are some quick information there again, just to keep you abreast as we move along. I'll occasionally adjust these if the numbers change. If not, those, those bullet points will stay the same. And as we go through and I make changes, I'll make them red for the next month. So if we're changing something, I'll make it red. And then the following month, it'll go back to black. And then if we have any other changes, it'll be red. There are the deeper dive, a little bit of the benefits that come into that. Now, Amy and I do keep a massive spreadsheet back and behind the scenes. If you're ever interested or if you're ever bored, we can certainly share that with the school board. You can come in and sit down and we can go line item by line item if you'd like to go through. We've got audited figures, we've got actuals, as you can see, for three years. We've got budget figures. We've got all kinds of figures to share if you, if you're interested. That's not a problem. Object 300s, again, professional technical services. And again, a lot of these things you'll see, we've made minor adjustments depending upon how we did last year or in prior years. And if we see a trend, we'll, we'll adjust moving forward. But we'll continue to watch a lot of these areas as well. Because remember, we are only four full months working on the fifth full month of the current year, trying to project where we're going to go seven months from now, plus another 12. Right? So we're trying to get almost 19, 20 months of information we're guessing at with as much variable, hard work and effort that we have behind us to try to move forward. Again, 500s, 600s, 700s, 800s, 900s. And what does this mean? So right now, this drives, this is what we call the interactive. This drives a 4.2 million dollar shortfall. It is, it would reflect in a 5.33% tax increase. That's just the way, I didn't do that on purpose because remember, our Act One Index is 5.3. And so we have no intention on staying there from an administrative perspective. I don't want to speak for the school board, but I'm pretty sure the school board doesn't want to stay there either. And so we've got a lot of work to do. This is the first look for us, equal sign. On the lower right hand corner, just for quick reference, if you're interested in say, Weaver, we got to get down to a 1%. Well, then you can see what that means and what we need to do as far as cut expenditures, increase revenues or use of fund balances to offset that, to get us to that particular tax increase. Just a quick runner in case you're interested. Again, we'll have six or seven different presentations. Our shortfall is not as bad as it's been the past several years. Remember, coming out of the pandemic, there were still a lot of unknowns. It's, it's shrunk, it's constricted a little bit as far as our progression and our ability to properly predict our trend and analysis moving forward. We feel a lot more confident moving forward. So we were well over 6 million the past two years for our first equal sign. We're at 4.2 million. So I feel like we've done a pretty good job of bringing things in much more closer to reality where we'll end up. Still being conservative, however. Earned income tax, we still continue to watch. The state revenues will be adjusted for the ESBI. Again, the reality is, is that calculation spreadsheet, spreadsheet from frontline, it's brand new. So they are going through, I was the guinea pig. We started adding some numbers and we ended up all over the place. However, I feel confident that the numbers that we put in are going to reflect where we're going to end up. I'm just waiting for the state to come out with that first governor's presentation to finalize that. It would be nice if they also finalized this year's budget too, by the way. We will continue, as Dr. Russell mentioned, we will continue discussion on personnel, enrollments, class sizes, mandatory requirements, special education requirements that, that we continue to, continue to look at for 2425 and they'll change over time. True up costs, Mr. Moran will be giving true up costs in January. We'll look, continue to look at the medical insurances. And then yes, we'll have that discussion about availability of fund balances and we'll bring those forward. We have audited the auditor's presentation from Carl from BBD LLP, who'll be here in January as well. That will kick off that conversation about reserves and what we have available to us moving forward. So we'll have another presentation on January 8th. And in January, we'll actually have the Act One Tax Resolution that we'll have, we'll recommend to move forward. Again, we all agree, we don't want to be at the 5.3%. So we can move forward relative ease to approve that resolution. We'll have the property tax rebate program. We'll update that because we have some new numbers to take into consideration because remember, it's based upon the state and the state increased their credit, so we have to reflect it in ours. Peasars rate will be officially certified a little bit later in December. Hopefully, by the time the holidays roll around, we'll be able to share that. And then the governor provides his presentation in February. Any questions?
Do we have any indication on how the state's going to fix the unconstitutionality of school funding?
None. At this point in time, I don't.
Anybody have any ideas about how they're ever going to do that?
You're talking about the lawsuit?
Yeah, there's an order.
Yes.
That it has to be fixed.
They set that to, they set that to a committee.
Right, I was just wondering if there are any ideas coming out of there.
No, nothing to share at this point in time. Obviously, business administrators and many school board members are saying, okay, get to it, let's go. And then there are some school board members and business administrators that are saying, you need to do it post haste. Even, even quicker. Those of us like here, okay, we're, we're a little bit better financial position than some others. And some others are really counting on that.
Well, we might get hurt. I mean, we all want lots down to have more money and ours down to have more money. And, but we don't want us to have any, our students to have any less resources. So how do we do that?
So they do have, they have a record surplus. So they can address it. Whether or not they're willing to or not, I don't know because for the very same reason that you said, I'd like to see us keep our reserves. That's what they're thinking up there as well. Try to keep as much of it as possible and make it stretch out. And there are those that are saying like Representative Cerisi, let's go, address these things. Charter school voucher, cyber charter school voucher tuition. I sat on a seminar with Representative Cerisi today with effort through PSBA. That effort alone, if it was passed by the legislature, would save school districts almost $500 million almost immediately. I don't, that would be a great number. If they can get it done, that would be fantastic. Really, that, that would be one of, that's a home run for everybody. Because it's not really taking away the ability of these cyber charter schools to do their job. It supports them. It just caps a lot of the dollars that they get.
I know it's off topic, but it just popped into my head. Prior to Governor Ridge putting Peasars into the school district, the state funded that. So we would have all that extra money or they would take money away from the schools.
So if I understand your, your comment, Mr. Saylor, yes. It used to be that school districts only paid in 50%.
Yeah.
Governor Ridge changed that, that we pay in 100% and then we get a 50% subsidy reimbursement six months later.
Yeah.
So it used to be we gave 50 cents for every dollar and that was good. Now we have to give a dollar and then we have to wait six months for the 50 cents to come back. Which takes away from our ability from an interest earnings perspective, but it adjusts the issues that the state had at the time.
Yeah.
Yes.
They get the interest earning.
Correct.
Hence the nice fund balance.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, here's an exciting topic. So we have these delinquent personal taxes that we've been tracking since 1971. So here's what we need, here's what we need to do. We need to recommend the elimination of these delinquent personal taxes because our ability to collect on these and support our, our school district collecting these has gone away. The IRS has a regulation that you only need to keep seven years of tax returns. The last bill that we issued was 2013. When people call us because they get a delinquent notice from Burkhym or they say, okay, how do I do this? Well, first of all, they say, you're wrong, it's not right. We go through the process. All right, so how do I support this? Because I don't have seven years of tax returns. And I say, wow, gee, this says you owe a 2006 occupation assessment tax bill. Ethically, it's not right anymore for us to, to stick to that. So we are recommending that we eliminate the collection of these delinquent taxes and be done with this. This does not impact our revenues. This is a balance sheet item. It is a taxes receivable and a deferred revenue. It does not impact any of our operating budget whatsoever. And I would recommend that we remove one point, 1.89 to almost 1.9 million dollars of taxes. Because the burden is on the taxpayer to be able to support their taxes and they can no longer do it. And the law pretty much says, the IRS says, you don't have to. So I would recommend that we remove this.
And our delinquent tax collector is reporting that they're uncollectible.
That's correct. So that would be the recommendation moving forward, straight and simple. And I think our taxpayers would, would benefit from that.
So if you're making that recommendation, what are the steps that we need to do in order to support you with that?
It's on the agenda.
Oh, it is.
It is on the agenda.
Sorry, I missed that part. It's getting late, sorry about that.
It is FCTW 503 and I would recommend that. Okay. Any questions from?
Is it happening less? Are we avoiding that now? It doesn't happen anymore?
These taxes were eliminated 10 and 13 years ago.
These are for the occupation assessment tax and the per capita tax. We eliminated the occupation assessment tax in 2011 and we eliminated the census department in the business office. And then in 2013, we finally got rid of the per capita, the five and $10 tax. And then in 2013, we finally got rid of the per capita, the $5 and $10 tax. So it's a natural progression for us. As a matter of fact, Burckheimer kind of said, well, you're kind of the only one that still has these taxes as a delinquent. And we said, okay, we want to get rid of them, how do we do that? So Dr. Campley, your point is well taken. We went right to solicitor and said, how do we make that? I understand, I understand. All right, Dr. Russell, can you advance me, I think? Okay. Any questions from the community on that one? Okay, thank you. Oops, sorry. Okay, approval to stipulation to settlement for a tax appeal. You can see here, we've been working on this one for quite some time. And the bottom line to approve this, we are recommending that you approve this. This drives a net impact of $1,800 for 23, 24.
One, I think that Mr. Saylor will do that. Okay.
Okay, I don't know. And then a reduction with the final cost of $3,255 from the total tax bill. So we are recommending that it's such a smaller portion, we are recommending settlement. There is additional information that has been included in the motion. Any questions? Any questions from the community?
Is this a condominium?
This is, yes. It is a portion of it. There is another portion that I received a nice letter on today that I forwarded to Mr. Chesney at Fox Rothschild. Okay. All right. And that's it, thank you.
You're good, Mr. Weaver, thank you very much. Administration is requesting 5.02, approve of vendor for concessions, stand renovations, be added to consent. I assume that there will be one objection to remove that from the consent? Do I have an objection?
I think that we're looking to move it to consent, correct? I don't have an objection.
So he's at the concession stand?
Oh, I'm so sorry, the concession stand, it's been, we talked about that two hours ago.
So 5.02 will not go on to consent. Looking for, without objection, to move 5.03, 5.04, 5.05 to consent, 5.06 is already on consent, 5.07 is the approval of the 2003, 2024 special education contracts and cost of services, without objection, we'll move that to consent, and 5.06 is our grants and donations for public information. And so ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. You have the next one too.
Double duty, Ms. White. Just to note that 6.01 and 6.02 will be done next week, December 11th.
Beautiful. All right, Dr. Weston, you're up.
Section 7, professional personnel, item 7.01 is a placeholder for acceptance of resignations and retirements. Items 7.02, 3, 4, 5, and 6 are listed as on consent, and that ends section 7.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Support personnel, Mr. Keenan.
Section 8, 8.01 also is a placeholder for acceptance of resignations and retirements. 8.02, 8.03, 8.04 are all on consent. And then 8.05, we have an approval to create a position. So we have the coordinator of food and nutrition services make a motion to create a coordinator of food and nutrition services.
Are you making the motion?
I believe I am.
Your thing, my second.
Is that an action item for this evening?
All right. Is there any comment, any questions about moving that to consent? If none, that ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Section 9 is governance. I will handle governance. 9.01 is the first reading on policies as presented. Are there any questions or comments? Dr. Weston?
Yeah, with regard to the, excuse me, proposed policy 815, acceptable use of internet computers and network resources, I sent some questions to you, Ms. White and Dr. Russell with regard to this policy because it just, it seems like a rather extensive rework of the current policy that we have, almost like it's a, it's a, almost a completely different policy from how I'm reading it. And I'm just wondering if there was any information provided from PSBA or from the Policy News Network as to why these changes were being proposed? What, what are the shortcomings of the current policy that required these, these extensive changes being made?
So it's been several years since we've reviewed the policy, and I think PNN was trying to update the language to make it clearer in terms of the expectations under the law when it comes to students using the internet. And I, I think when our, our chief information officer and supervisor of communications and technology reviewed it, they felt as if it was clearer in terms of the understanding the reader would take away. And we typically follow PSBA's recommendations, and they, they are in support of making good choices for students and upholding the law, and so we were in agreement with that and supported the recommendations along with a couple of inserts we recommended from our current policy. And if now you have access to the PNN, you can read, it's the October 23 PNN if you'd like, and I will address your questions too.
I, I will take a look at that because I, quite frankly, I find the current policy much more general, much more comprehensive, and a lot easier to follow, a lot easier to understand than the, than the revision. I'm not, I'm not a fan of the revision at all. So I will look at the PNN and see what I can take away from that. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding first read? I do have a comment with regards to 201. Some information came by way of an email from a parent with some feedback regarding the admission of students, early admission to kindergarten. And so if it's all right with the board of a whole, with regard to these first reads and with respect to our new sitting members, would it be possible to send these actually to policy committee and have them just revisited in January?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's my request. In addition to that request, I have.
Are you, you're sending all policies back to policy committee?
Just with regards to Dr. Weston's question and regards to policy 201, I have some hesitation in moving these to a second read just because of the fact that the sitting board members, they're out of context, the new sitting board members, I think deserve some time to review them with regards to sending them for a second reading.
But just to discuss, just to make sure, the timing, because that timing, I don't think timing's an issue, but just to ask, when's registration? So we don't want somebody to be caught registering some kid and then us withdrawing them. That's all, I'm thinking.
Yeah, and I think that's a valid point. Typically, early entrance families apply towards the summer. They do apply a little bit later in the year. We test those students during the summer, but you're right.
I just don't want to.
Something to keep our eyes on.
Get some kids' hopes up.
Right, to come to kindergarten.
Going to kindergarten, and then we're saying, oh, no, no, we just changed the policy on you.
Yeah, because these won't start till first read, wouldn't be February because the policy meeting's after the January meeting.
That's all. I just want to make sure we move them forward, if we're going to move them forward in a timely fashion so that no kids get caught.
Right, so theoretically then, if we follow, if we hold off and it's reviewed.
So do think about it, you know, and hopefully we can move it forward next month. You know, that, and the, the main, the main part, or in February. But the main part of that, you have a lot of time, but the main part of that, and it's pretty simple, is that we will not be supporting early admission of four-year-olds to our all-day kindergarten. And we can discuss that and, you know, go to policy meeting, watch the policy meeting, you know, on the discussions on that and, and if you need to, and, and, you know, see. I, I mean, I would also, I wish, just I was at policy, the last policy meeting, I'm not sure how many I'll make, but the, the, no, I would like some information, not that we need any, but I think maybe some of this came, came from kindergarten teachers, I don't know, talking about the early admissions and how difficult it might be, might be on them with the full day.
Psychologists, actually.
That's where mainly came from?
Yeah, they, they are the ones that actually brought the recommendation forward for administration to rethink early entrance, moving into a full-day program.
But they were concerned about the student body as a whole and the students as a whole? Like, it would be better for these students or better for what?
Actually, want to set them up for success. And that was really the main concern, that there are times when students academically qualify to start kindergarten, but other aspects of their development aren't where they benefit their success or support their success. That's really what they're concerned about. And so going to full-day kindergarten, they worried a little bit more. We've had students start in early entrance and not be successful and have to repeat kindergarten. They're trying to avoid that this time. And very few districts in Montgomery County, they pulled those data, have early entrance for kindergarten, and in particular with full day, worried about the stamina of our students and just wanting them to be successful.
It's a very rare thing, speaking from a psychologist's standpoint, because of the social, emotional implications and the fact that a lot of these students, it's more of what they have as far as their cultural, what they have access to, and they kind of level out around the age of eight. And if they seem somewhat advanced, they're not necessarily advanced when they get older. It's better to let them start at the natural progression and then see how they're doing, and then there's always ways to enrich them within the classroom. And there's also different courses and things that they can take as they get older to help advance them faster even than that. But to, developmentally speaking, to start at four years old, it just, it's not appropriate. So in most.
I agree. I think it's better for the kid not to push him forward at that age.
Yes, psychologists in general.
At the younger ages, five, six, seven, I don't think, from what I've seen, I've seen it. You know, I try to push first kid ahead and it's like, oh, no, 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 let's slow down.
And that's what the psychologists typically, typically advocate for, and most districts that have had early advancement options have done away with them and have really stuck hard to their guidelines.
Yeah, not so much about the content of 201, but just what, what are you looking for here? Do you want to, you want to send it right back to policy committee essentially for another full review, for the policy committee's benefit or for the new board members?
I think it's a dual benefit. I understand Mr. Saylor's point in not maybe moving all of them back. We can discuss that as well, I'm open to that as well. I think what, with regards to 201, speaking for the, it was a compelling, I thought it was a compelling argument for early admission. I did also, I, I hear and agree with some of the argument against early admission, but I just feel as though maybe some more context could be given with regards to exceptions. Because I, I feel like it's a very individual child-driven thing.
Would you be, would you be okay with the poli, can I just, for a second, open up the policy? And would you be okay with, so for instance, the policy says, you know, there are no, can't be four years old and get, can't be four and get early admittance, right? Instead of sending this back to policy, creating an AR where the school, school board is willing to convene a panel and hear the parent out and make that decision, because.
How does the rest of the board feel about that? And Dr. Russell?
Yeah, I have questions about that, only because, I mean, I understand where Mr. Saylor's going, but I have questions about the psychologists who actually do the testing and then being the ones that recommend this child is ready based on the data we gather or this child is not. There are other ways that we can support enrichment and acceleration. I'd like to actually give that parent a call who reached out to us today and have a conversation. We sometimes have students skip grades. If the data support that, we accommodate, or we have students from the middle level come up to the high school. So there are things that we can do to support accelerating and enriching a student's experience that doesn't necessarily need to be starting kindergarten at four years old.
Okay, understood, understood. And, and I guess to me, I just a little bit more conversation around it, not that I disagree necessarily one way or the other. And to Mr. Saylor, your point, if, I'm, I'm personally also fine with moving 201 and 815, Dr. Weston, back to policy and then bringing it for a first read. If, if everybody's okay with that, we can move the others forward. I think they're sort of benign. In addition to that, I'm going to request that admin add to the January policy agenda, policy 720, along with a new bathroom safety policy, so that it can be discussed equally and comparatively. Because policy 720 did not go through committee, I'm also asking that a motion be added to next week's agenda for immediate removal pending the outcome of the committee.
I'm sorry, the committee would be meeting before next week?
So I'm requesting that 720 be added to the policy meeting for January for discussion and review, along with the bathroom policy, that would be a new policy, a bathroom safety policy from administration. In conjunction with that, for next week, I would like 720 to appear on the agenda for removal.
I think if I understand correctly, we will add a motion to the agenda next week that recommends inactivating policy 720. Right now, it's considered an active policy.
How's that done? You just, the administration just can't add motions?
No, I, I understand, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm paraphrasing what Ms. White is suggesting, I'm sorry. So that what I'm hearing is administration will incorporate that agenda item onto the agenda for board consideration and also bring forward a revised policy that focuses on safety as well as bathroom use. And pending the outcome of that policy committee conversation, I think is what you're saying then, will determine what a new or updated or revised policy 720 or whatever it is looks like.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to question how you can add something to the agenda next week? In what procedure? Can we just add something to the agenda without taking a vote?
She made, she's making a motion.
No, I'm not making a motion.
She's requesting.
I'm requesting it be added to the agenda.
May it be added to the agenda, the agenda will have to be approved next week.
And the president has the ability to add to the agenda. Even if I were to ask the president to add something to the agenda, that's up to the president whether or not it is added, so I don't, I don't see that as being an issue.
This is dual notice.
That's full transparency as opposed to me adding it during an agenda meeting, that's correct.
Okay, well, if we need a motion, I am fine with a motion.
There, yeah, and it's actually the board president and superintendent that developed the agenda, just to be clear there for the record. And we update the agenda sometimes between the work session and the business meeting. So there, there isn't an action required. If we were in the business meeting and somebody wanted to add an agenda item, we would defer to Mr. Subers and see if it were possible under the sunshine law to actually take action to do that.
Yeah, we're well before the 24-hour deadline on this, so adding an item to next week's agenda is really not, doesn't even need to come up for discussion.
No, that's, that's, that's accurate, and again, the, you know, the next week's agenda will be subject to a vote of a, you know, will need to be approved at that meeting. While we're on the subject of adding things to the agenda, I, I would recommend that the Act One opt-out resolution be added to next week's agenda because there's a January 4th deadline. I was going to communicate that offline, but, and, and that's, I don't think that should be a concern for the district, for the board, because it's a, a resolution that we annually adopt. All you're committing to is staying within the Act One index, which is particularly high this year, so I don't think that should be an issue.
I, I welcome the recommendation. Last year, there was an issue because we approved it too early, because you have five days from the date of approval that you have to submit it to PDE. We approved it so early, the website wasn't open for us to, to submit it. So I want to make sure that it's submittable at this point in time.
Well, we can discuss that again, but I, at least I'll raise the possibility.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. I don't want to miss that.
Yeah, because otherwise, we don't have another meeting.
No, you don't, that's a problem.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or conversation on 9.01 first read? Seeing none, 9.02 is the approval to hold second reading and adopt the policies as presented. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, so we'll move all of those forward. Go ahead.
Just considering the same thing with the due diligence of giving the new seated board members time to review, are there any on here that you would like to have extra time reviewing before we send it to second read for a vote?
I, I personally don't be, partially because I'm on the policy committee, at least previously was, so I, I'm already quite aware of these. Could I suggest that we could still leave these on for first read? Because we're technically not taking an action on this, we just would be leaving it on until next week, and then any board member should be able to request for it to be taken off of, off of the first read at the next meeting. So that gives us a week to look at these.
These are on second read.
Oh, they're on second? Well, it's still, it's still the same process though. Because we're not taking an action tonight, we take the action at the business meeting, so we have a week to review. so we have a week to review.
We'll leave them off consent, I guess.
They're not even on consent because they're a second read. Second read's very similar to a consent, but am I correct in my assumption, Mr. Subers?
We typically would have, we could have added this to the consent agenda. It will, based on your requests, remain off the consent agenda to allow you the opportunity to make a motion to amend, to remove any, you or any other Board member to remove a particular policy from the second reading, if that's your desire after having an additional week to review that, if I understand your intent.
That's correct, and that's me trying to address the concerns of the group.
Yes. Okay, so, thank you, Dr. Campley, Mr. Liggett. 9.04 and, no, 3 and 4, rather, are both appointments. They would be Board appointments to both North Monco Technical Center and the PVE Education Foundation to replace Board members who are no longer on the School Board. I would like to invite everyone to do a little research with regards to both of these positions, and if you are willing to put your hand up and offer your services to these appointments, please email Dr. Russell and myself. In addition to these, just while we're on the topic of interest, there will be an email going out with regard to Committee assignments, any that you happen to be interested in, if you have any questions about what the Committee actually is, that information will be relayed as well, and we'll be working on those. We do need to fill these two positions at the next Board meeting. So, between now and Monday, if you have interest, you know, please let us know. 9.05 and 6 are approvals for non-resident seniors. That's a motion to approve non-resident seniors to finish out the school year with Perkioman Valley High School and receive their diploma. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing them, we'll move those to consent. 9.07 is a commitment to the principles of governance. It's a motion to commit to principles of governance. It's Policy 11, they're listed there. All of us as Board members commit to those principles. Are there any questions? Move that to consent. 9.08 is a discussion, I jumped the gun there. 9.08 is the discussion of Board member appointments for Committees. Does anybody have any questions for the meeting tonight with regards to Committees?
Overall, keeping things the same, but safety and operations, like, can you just-
Right, so, as of right this moment, we are going to work on appointments for the two appointments. The Policy Committee, the Safety and Operations Committee, as it's going to convene, and then there are several others, assessment, negotiations, communications. I think that's all of them right now. Everything else with regards to Committees of the whole will stay the same for the time being. Dr. Russell, is that all accurate?
That is correct, and we have three groups that need to be negotiated this year, so we will have negotiations up and running second half of the year, so I'm glad you included that one.
And I-
Would current assignments on Committees continue to be unchanged at this point?
So, traditionally, assignments get realigned once the, what's the word?
New board?
The new, the reorganization meeting takes place in December. Generally, there will be new assignments, there'll be a circulation of Board members throughout Committees.
Mr. Calvis, I'd like to try and forehand this to me.
So, with regards to terms, that's a separate situation. So, for example, Mr. Keenan will continue on his term. If you're, have, that's a separate situation, so that's independent of the other Committee rotations. Thank you, that's a good question.
Health and wellness, we didn't mention that.
Health and wellness as well.
Health and wellness, yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah, okay.
There's a chart in the list that will circulate to make sure everybody has access to the information.
Yeah, we can send that in the memo or we can send an email.
Perfect. If that's all on Committee Appointments, 9.09 is Discussion and the Review of the Board Goals. I don't know that everyone has had a chance to review them. We can take a look at that within this week and have further discussion next week. And that ends the Governance Section. Moving on to the closing items. Are there any comments from the audience that are still here? Mr. Bally, go ahead.
It's a very short comment, but I just wanted to say, I am so happy that this is a return to almost boring compared to what we've been witnessing the past year. It was a very, very respectful meeting for majority of it, and I look forward to being able to observe for the rest of my education at PVE and potentially after. So, thank you all.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, 10.02, comments from Board members. Are there any comments from Board members? New or old? Dr. Campley?
So, I just wanted to speak to the situation on Friday. You know, I was, my heart broke when I heard about what had happened, and then, of course, hearing the three young ladies come up to the podium and speak, I mean, that was just heart-wrenching, and hearing the moms speak was heart-wrenching as well. And no children or parents should ever have to go through anything like that, ever. And there's just some things I had wanted to speak to. You know, we talk about, you know, the way that we're going to react if something like that happens, and I by all means agree with the speakers. We need to have clear policies and we need to have clear procedures and understanding of, you know, what happens when these situations occur. And I think the roundtable is a great idea, Dr. Russell. I think that'll be a way for, if there are questions around some of the wording, sometimes it's hard with policies and procedures to be so precise, just because each situation is so individualized. It's hard to really be able to capture every single situation that could occur. So, I think being able to have some of those conversations about what some of the language in those policies speaks to, for example, the 10 days, does it necessarily mean 10 days stop-all? It can mean 10 days while things are reviewed, and then, that could then turn into other things. But, at the end of the day, policies and procedures, SROs, school security, those are all reactive situations. And reaction is great. We need to know how to react in an emergency. That is important. But, for me, I've been saying this since I was inducted onto the Board. We need a bullying curriculum. I'm, I know it should have a tattoo. I've spoken to Dr. Russell numerous times, in fact, we spoke earlier. I think we need to continue to look for that, we need to really have explicit instruction. The students that were watching this occur obviously didn't know how to interact. What do I do when I'm in that situation? Should I call 911? Should I go get an adult? Should I look for a security officer? Should I do something other than video? You know, they just, they don't know what to do. And they're in a sense of shock in that moment as well. So, I don't want to say that they were all social media grabbers, because I think, you know, what do you do when you're in that situation? You're scared. But also, what are some of the things that we're looking for? What are some of the red flag signs? And how do we support students proactively so they don't rise to this occasion? What are things that we can do? What are, what are ways that we can layer and supports so we don't get to these situations? Now, granted, if we get to a situation, we need to know how to react, but what can we do proactively? And those are the things that I want to see happened, happening. And, you know, we talk about MTSS and looking at data and looking at ways to review, and what are those red flags and how we can help students. That's something that I think is something that we need to do as a district. The other thing I want to do is, now that this has occurred, those girls were clearly traumatized. Who wouldn't be? But, how many other students witnessed that event that were traumatized? How many students saw the videos and were traumatized from watching the videos, talked to friends who were traumatized? So, one of the things, and this is something I should have thought of and I didn't, but with everything I was, that was going through my mind, is just the district response to the students, has there been like a crisis response team sent out with psychologists and counselors so that these students have access? Like, the mom who has been trying to get her daughter into counseling, are the social workers connecting with those directly impacted with reaching out to make sure that they are getting community-based resources? And the students who maybe aren't directly impacted but still having a fear and having a trauma response, are they getting supports with how they're feeling with that trauma? Counselors and psychologists and social workers should be at the ready for those students to access them throughout the day, even if that means pulling the psychs from the other buildings and having them at the high school for this week. So, that's just my thoughts on it, but I want the community to know, you know, we can't say a whole lot with the situation, but we are working behind the scenes to talk to Administration and to see what we can do to support students. We want students to feel safe and secure. That is of utmost importance. So, nobody's really here, but if they're listening, there's a few people here, but if anyone's out there listening, know that we care and we are trying, and it's something that we are focused and prioritizing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campley. Anybody else?
The only thing that I'd like to add is a quote from Nelson Mandela in reference to reconciliation is, "True reconciliation does not merely consist in forgetting the past." So, we have work to do. And I'm bullied by Mr. Saylor, Mr. Keenan, your engagement this evening or whatever, because I think there's lots of wisdom on this Board that we all need to utilize, so. So, I hope this Board works to its full potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Dr. Weston?
Just a little bit different tack here, fully in accord with everything Mr. McKinney and Dr. Campley said. This is more of a request going forward. We heard a lot tonight about staffing, potential staffing needs with regard to full-day kindergarten, heard a lot with regard to budgeting with regard to full-day kindergarten. I'd be very interested in having an update on the status of the implementation of full-day kindergarten for next year. This is something that we want to have for August of next year. It is, which will be here faster than any of us think, and I think we need to start hearing some details about how this plan is going to be implemented. I think it's a great plan, I think it's overdue, very happy to see it, but we need to hear some information.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. Anyone else?
I would just like to say, along with what Dr. Campley said, I was very, very, I got a little emotional when the young ladies were up talking about the incident that occurred on Friday. And, you know, like, the safety of our students is truly the utmost importance in our district. And, you know, I would wonder what the administrators are doing as it relates to, I know they talked about PBIS, you know, what things do we have in place to really support our students in learning how to navigate conflict? Conflict is a part of life. You're not, you're not going to always agree with someone, but there's a way to handle that, and we really have to support our students in learning how to navigate conflict. The answer is not to put your hands on somebody, that's not the answer. So, really trying to find ways to support our students in navigating issues of conflict, because even as adults, you know, they're going to encounter situations where they may not agree with someone. But, that's an opportunity for you to sit down and have a conversation and not put your hands on each other. I was, I had to keep myself together and not get too emotional listening to those young ladies and those mothers get up here and talk. I can't imagine what that must be like to get a call about your daughter being attacked at school. But, we really need to try to find ways to support our students in teaching them how to navigate conflict, because the social media, you know, putting the videos on, on social media is not the answer. That, that just promotes more of that. So, just looking at ways that the Administration could support our students and learn how to handle conflict and differences amongst themselves.
Thank you, Mrs. Sadler. Anyone else?
I would wholeheartedly, like, again, follow up on, not only the comments that Ms. Saylor just made, but also the student rep who said, you know, "We have to behave in a manner that tells people that there are ways to come to resolutions without being angry and without attacking one another." So, again, we have to mirror the behavior we want to see in our students, which means, like, if we have discord amongst the Board or whatever, we've got to figure out a way where that does not spill out into the public, that it just looks like an all-out, like free-for-all. So, yeah, so again, let us make sure that we keep our own house clean before we start to try and hold 17, 18-year-olds accountable, so.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. There are no other comments. 10.03 is a Notice of Video Recording Disclaimer, and 10.0-